Good evening. We're going to start tonight off with prayer and pledge. Prayer will be led by Councilman Copeland and the pledges will be led by Councilwoman Garcia. Garcia, I'm sorry.
The new season.
Tried to turn my head. It's good to laugh. It's good to laugh, y'all. Councilman Copeland.
If you would like to participate, please bow your head. Gracious Father, we thank you for another day. Lord, we just thank you for laughter. We thank you for laughter. We thank you for joy. We thank you in a time of heartache, frustration, and pain, God, that you've saw fit just in this moment to just shine your love and your joy on the city of Saginaw for this moment, oh God. We accept this just continues to be an expression of what is to come. We thank you, oh Lord, that you are making us that model city, just as America notified and acknowledged us as a model city of the 70s, God. We thank you that what is returning to us, something new, something great of opportunities. We thank you for jobs and opportunities. We thank you for growth. We thank you for the citizens that are returning back to the city. We thank you that Saginaw is becoming a home for families to grow. We thank you that our education is going to grow. We thank you that our businesses are going to grow. We thank you that our love for our communities are going to grow. We thank you that our neighborhoods are going to be revitalized. Lord, we ask that you give us strength and wisdom and guidance as we meet this evening, oh God. We thank you for our citizens who are here to share their heart, oh God. We thank you that you give us a listening ear to hear and receive what they may share with us. Lord, continue to lead our leadership, the city staff, our city servants, that we will do what you are calling for us to do, that we will be the city that is a light on the heel, that is an example for this nation. Father, we give you all glory, honor, and praise in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams and Councilmember Ballas are both excused. Mayor Proton Bench.
Present.
Councilmember Ostash.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Absent.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
And Mayor Moore.
Present.
We have six members present and three absent. You do have a corner.
Thank you. Let me start off by saying good evening again to everyone. This is a public hearing of the city council. I'm asking the audience, let me do this first. All council persons, please silence your phones and your computers. Now, audience, if I can get you to silence your phones, I sure would appreciate it. This is a public meeting, so we're asking to people to refrain from talking, booing, any excessive behavior, cheering, and all of that. Reminds you, there are people who are watching us on SGTV as well as in the council chambers. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, I don't have any announcements this evening, so it takes us to public hearings.
The purpose, okay. A public hearing. A public hearing is for the property owners that received a single lot special assessment notice to state their objection. Speakers must limit their remarks to only the subject at hand. Begin by stating your name, your property address, and you will be allowed three minutes to speak. Speakers should address council as a whole. The object will be to submit to the appropriate department for review and recommendations. Any supportive document must be handed to the city clerk. This is a public hearing, not a question and answer period.
And Mayor, our public hearing tonight is regarding the 2023 single lot special assessment tax rule.
Do we have anyone that would like to speak on this matter? If so, come up to the podium. State your name and your address. You have three minutes to state your case. Hold on one minute, sweetie.
I'm sorry.
You now may begin, ma'am.
My name is Jeannie Young, and I'm addressing the address at 1810 Boxwood Street. The city came through and said that they did some weeding or cut grass down through there, which is truly not true. It's, I got pictures to prove some of what I'm talking about. They had down through there fires like them dumping trash, empty lots. It's only three houses down through there that's kept up. Two over my own and a neighbor owns the other one. I just want y'all to take a look into this because they didn't cut my grass. And another thing, at 1810 Boxwood, the lot that's right next to it, the city owned that lot. As a citizen, I've been keeping that lot up for years, free. So this is why I'm complaining about this. They did not weed nor cut my grass. I would ask that y'all please look into what I'm talking about. Just look into it, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Any information you have, ma'am, can you please pass it to the clerk? You said you had pictures. Yes, ma'am. I need you to make sure all your documents get in to the appropriate person so it can go to the appropriate department. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else? Last and final time, is there anyone else to speak on the public hearing? I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
We are now at public input.
Please speak clearly and slowly and remain courteous to the individuals who are watching and who are speaking. You will be timed by the clerk. You have three minutes to present your case. Please get all of your information in within the three minutes, and I won't have to cut you off. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker tonight is Guadalupe Guavera.
You can put it down. You can put it down.
I don't want to break anything.
No, you're not breaking it, trust me.
Madam Mayor and City Councilman and Woman, I am here representing the American GI Form Women of Saginaw. We are an organization that has been in Michigan since 1956. We are a veterans' organization, and we work for the betterment of our Hispanic families, and education is our priority. Today, I am here to invite you to our Cesar Chavez Luncheon, which is our annual fundraiser for scholarships for our college-bound students. Depending on how much we raise, we have been blessed to be able to give 5,000 to 10,000 in the past. Last year, we were very fortunate, and we gave out $8,000 in September. Our children are from all walks of life. They are A students that come from all high schools throughout the Saginaw County, who work hard to succeed, to get where they're at. We chose Cesar Chavez because he was a Navy veteran and worked hard with the American people to help clear injustice. Because of our scholarship giving, we have some teachers, nurses, lawyers, politicians, and working in our community to help others. We are asking each one of you to please buy a $35 ticket to our luncheon. We have great speakers coming and delicious food. Nobody will walk away hungry. This is going to be on March 31st at Local 699 on Bagley Street. We are also selling ads in our booklet. They're personal, and there's also organizations. Please come and invite a friend. I still have some time, so I want to say, we, the GI Form, also support our tennis program. We, our children get less and less exercise. They, more and more parents are having to pay for any program that their children participate that is outside of the learning of reading, math, and science. And our children need good sportsmanship. They need to learn teamwork and to respect each other. I think the game of tennis will give them that. Besides sunshine and exercise, they will have other human contact. Thank you again. See you at the luncheon. I'd like to know if I can pass these out?
I can do that for you if you hand them to me.
Hand it to the clerk, please.
Was that my three minutes? Oh, I was going to give some to the man that follows me.
Thank you.
You can't hit any times.
Our next speaker is Galberto Guavera.
Thank you to my wife. She stole some of my thunder. Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, city managers, madam clerk. I'm here because when ARPA came to Saginaw, one of the things they said to us is that you had to be a program that had sustainability. The American GI Form, as you just heard, has been in Saginaw for 65 years. The number of things that we've been involved with has been education, has been community projects. If you recall, in 1980, we started our first Cinco de Mayo Parade, and it's been active ever since. In 2003, we started the Cesar Chavez Luncheon, which provides scholarships for our students, as was mentioned earlier. We wanted to bring this to you because American GI Form was started by Dr. Hector Garcia, a surgeon from Corpus Christi, Texas. He was also in the U.S. Army. By the way, I am a veteran as well from the U.S. Army. His plight to this, to this organization was when a mother came to him, and in this case, a wife, as a widow, she said to Hector Garcia, "My hometown in the state of Texas refuses to bury my husband," a veteran. And she said to him, the reasons they gave her was because he was a Mexican, but not a veteran, just a Mexican. So Cesar Chavez, who also was a veteran, as we mentioned earlier, Dr. Garcia went throughout the state of Texas organizing chapters, and then through the United States, again organizing chapters. As was mentioned earlier, Saginaw, Michigan was a chapter in 1958. We've been, we're 65 years of age. I'm a little over 65, but nevertheless, I'm still active in our community. Our program, as we heard ARPA coming in, we said to ourselves, we need to create what we've had in the past, and that's an atmosphere of sportsmanship. We have now submitted a proposal to the youth development. It's called the Richard Boncho Gonzalez Tennis Academy. This academy is for young people, the ages of eight to 14. We will have this academy start at the new Garber Courts that was just initially dedicated. We're going to make arrangements to have that academy at those courts Saturday morning, eight weeks during the summer. We're going to have a winter academy that's going to follow along. I spoke to the manager at the Saginaw Athletic Club, which has indoor tennis courts. He agreed to house and help us at the same time. At the same time, he also said to me, "Don't worry, we will have the instructors, not only at the Saginaw Athletic Club, and we will have instructors also at the Garber Courts." I think this program is going to not only...
Motion to extend the speaker's time by 45 seconds.
Give me a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Our mission is simple, to inspire and prepare today's youth through physical fitness, character building, academic knowledge in the game of tennis, sportsmanship enhancement, and positive participation. The tennis program in Saginaw, yes, it's going to go over to the county because of the facility of the Saginaw Athletic Club. But nevertheless, we're going to work with 20 students. And we submitted this proposal. We had not heard anything, and that's why we're here, to find out why we were not looked at as a possible outdoor, physical, and mental kind of program for young people of the ages of eight to 14. We have also contacted other organizations to participate with this, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Danita Dorsey.
First, I want to thank members of the city council for your hard work and your due diligence when allocating funding to the community when it comes to ARPA funds. As a member and employee of one of the organizations that receive funding, we have had our meeting with Guide House, and there appears to be some miscommunication, possibly some misinformation between our meeting with the Guide House and information that we have received from city council. So if we could receive some clarification on how we are supposed to be proceeding from here, that would be greatly appreciated. After that meeting, I felt that, I thought we were further along in the process than we actually are. I've been reading through the Treasury final rule of these ARPA funds, just to get some more clarification of myself. It is very broad language, so I know it can be open to interpretation in many ways. So if our city council can provide us some interpretation and clarification on where we should be in this process, that would be great. Because according to the final rule, the programming that we have submitted is eligible under ARPA, whereas in our meeting, we're told that some of our programming may not be eligible, and that we are being vetted now by Guide House, and they have to look at our programming. Administrative costs for programming is eligible under ARPA. Challenges covering payroll, rent, mortgage, and other operating costs is eligible under the final rule, and that's on page 23. It also says that capital expenditures that do not exceed $1 million, that you don't even need any written justification for that. And that is on page 34 of this final Treasury ARPA rule. Now, the ARPA rule is 437 pages, and this is just the overview that the government provides. But responding to the public health emergency and economic impacts for funded programs, assistance to nonprofits, is eligible under the ARPA rule. Ineligible projects include large projects solely for economic development, which I think we may want to be careful with, some money that we have already expended to a project that is under that definition. According to the final ARPA rule, that project is considered ineligible. Also, it says that for revenue loss, the standard allowance is up to $10 million. However, this city council could have chosen to use the formula, which is a four-step formula. So if we have used that formula and got to $26 million instead of $10 million, then we would like to see how our city council got to $26 million in revenue loss. Because if not, then it appears that there may be...
Motion to extend the speaker's time by 45 seconds.
Is motion on the floor? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
It says that up to a standard allowance of $10 million, our city council has said that we've had $26 million in revenue loss. So there's apparently a possible gap of $16 million. So we would like to see what that formula was and how our city council got to $26 million. And if not, then that means there is more funding that is eligible for assistance to small businesses, assistance to nonprofits in this community that could go more towards some of the capital expenditure projects that I know some members of the city council wanted to do. So if we could get some clarification on where we are headed from our city council and not from Guide House, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Eggleston.
Good evening, everyone, city council, residents, those who are watching. My name is Eric Eggleston. I reside at 11913 M. Hurst in the city of Saginaw. I am also the CEO of Youth Development Corporation at 126 South Waddock here in the city of Saginaw. And you heard my program director, Ms. Dorsey, come before you after our meeting. And as the CEO, I was alarmed at some of the language that was said that was not part of the assessment. For example, and I wish Dave was here, in the assessment, the exact words was hypothetically, "How many people could you serve if resources was unlimited?" And I looked at him and said, "I wouldn't be in this room if it was unlimited." That's number one. Number two, there were some issues with the assessment that I had asked for just some clarification. And I would love for our city council to clarify. The biggest takeaway for me in that room is when I said, "We are federally funded by the Department of Labor." There's no way I would have submitted a proposal, and if I would have known it was on reimbursement, because I cannot co-mingle funds. And you didn't give me that option nowhere in the process until I got in this little room here and then was told it's on reimbursement. But then, the disturbing part is when he looked at me and said, "How much do you need for startup?" I'm like, "Startup? So is this a loan? Is it a forgivable loan? Or is it coming from what was allocated?" If it comes from what's allocated, guys, that is not a reimbursement, that is a drawdown. And that's what I do with the Department of Labor in five states. It's a drawdown. I show the documentation, they approve it, they release those funds. And then when I go back in two weeks, I show that I had to use those funds. I did send to Councilwoman Lamar today the federal tracker form for the Department for the ARPA funds, and I hope she shared that with other individuals at the rest of the council. Because when you see the projects that have been funded for this, you will see how far we're behind. That's a tracker that tracks every one of these dollars by state, by municipality, and by the programs. And I don't see Saginaw on that tracker. And that's disturbing. This is not supposed to be easy. So again, I need clarification. I cannot co-mingle funds.
Motion to extend the speaker's time by 45 seconds.
Is a motion on the floor? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Again, this is where the rubber meets the road for YDC. We cannot co-mingle funds. I cannot rob Peter to pay Paul waiting on a reimbursement. And if I was told that, YDC would have never submitted a proposal for those funds. As much as we need those funds, and for my city to put me in a position to have to answer to the federal government for co-mingling funds, you cannot justify that position. We need clarification, and we need it now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of city council, I stand here today asking you to fund the proposal submitted by Mission in the City. I have been an active participant for over 10 years as a teenager and continue now to be a participant as a young adult in a leadership role. This park provides hope and inspiration to youth and students who do not have the means to get to other places of entertainment. Many of the people who enter this park daily see it as a safe place where they can come to learn, exercise, and grow, and enjoy family time with their family and friends. This one-of-a-kind park on Saginaw's east side has hosted many events, including the first black grand chess master in the country, youth events, Halloween, and back-to-school giveaways, even an Easter egg hunt in which 5,000 eggs were given out annually. It was said by one of our council members that they wanted to hear our youth speak while we're speaking. I ask you to support this park and by doing so, provide our community with a safe place for children to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Craig Tatum.
Now, Mayor, first of all, I'm hearing that there is no sound for those listening on the TV, on the internet, wherever they're listening, just so you're aware.
It's been passed on.
Okay, all right, great, all right. Distinguished members of the city council, Mission in the City, which is a 501(c)(3), separate 501(c)(3) organization, apply for ARPA funds for one reason and one reason only, and that was to give hope to a segment of Saginaw that has and is still suffering tremendously from access to a safe place where residents are able to get, to get healthy, play, laugh, grow, learn, and enjoy their family. This Violence-Free Park has been a staple on Saginaw's east side for 17 years. We're seeking funds, as others, simply to increase our ability to do our part in helping to transform this community. It's my understanding that funds have been set aside to create and maintain areas and programming for youth, and I believe that Mission in the City provides that atmosphere. This jewel space affords youth and adults the opportunity to exercise the body and the mind. And so if children are a priority for the funds, we ask that Mission in the City receive due consideration. You've been given the altered proposal that we have sent in your direction, and we ask that you would fund that proposal. I ask this question as I go to my seat, or several. I echo the sentiments of Mr. Eggleston as it relates to the questions being asked in the community right now. How is it that funds were articulated one way when we applied, but now it seems like the rules have changed? That's what people are saying in the community. It almost feels like they feel they have been duped and that the money has already been set up to be snatched away from them and given to somebody else. Those are questions that people are asking, and those are questions we don't have clarity on. I keep saying this, I'm concerned. I'm concerned about the east side of Saginaw. Because for me, right now, it doesn't seem like there's much money of this funding going to that part of our community. My fear is that 10 years from now, we'll be asking the same questions. Why hasn't the east side changed? And if money isn't put forth to do something to make sure that the residents know this money is there, we've got a lot of questions and thinking to do. So I say to you, I'm willing to help any way I can. You don't have to fund everything we've asked. We're just simply saying, for a park that's been there 17 years, Violence-Free, is well-respected in this community, and to not be considered for a dime at this point, that's something I'm asking you to consider. I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Charles Lawrence. Okay, let's go with Lula Woodard.
Good evening. Excuse me, good evening, everyone. It's a delight to be here. And so this is my second time being here. And I come and stand for women of colors. My name is Lula Woodard. I reside at 1119 Feline Street. I come to you in a different role on today in that I am educator. I have taught over nearly forty years now, having retired from Saginaw Public Schools here in Saginaw. I've done K-12, all of those grades. My background is in special education, so I continue to teach. My teaching certificate is current. You can look me up. My social works license are current. You can look me up. I'm Lars for that. In addition to that, I am also a certified recovery coach for women of colors. And so I stand with you. I spent eight years in addition at Delta College, teaching in the English department. As of last year, I stepped away to do more prevention programs for women of colors. That's what we have been doing. We have been providing and facilitating evidence-based programs for the last five, six years. And I have been on the team for four of those years. I have been with women of colors. We are celebrating thirty years in April in this community, as an icon in this community. So our endeavors in the community follows us as a staple in this community. And I've been with women of colors twenty-three of those thirty years. So I've seen the ups and the downs. I've seen the finances that have come through. I've seen this. And so I stand to say that because of the fact that my heart is for our young people, and I continue to teach for our young people, because I see what the pandemic did for our children, and it grieves me to my heart. And so we, women of colors, we have stepped up the plate even during the pandemic. We were able to pivot and do our program, our programs, on Zoom. And a lot of the other agencies did not do that, but we did. And so I'm saying that, you know, not being considered for the ARPA funds, I have a problem in my heart with that. We're teaching life skills, because our kids need life skills. There's not being taught at home. Our schools are suffering because of that, and the things, and my heart goes out to all the teachers and all of those administrators that are working with the kids. But we, women of colors, we're stepping in and being a part, we're stepping in and to be the gap for these children, you know? And so the ARPA funds are great. We hope that you reconsider for women of colors in doing so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chris Giles Yarn.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Chris Giles Yarn, and I am a Heritage High School senior, and I would love to speak on behalf of Women of Colors. I've been volunteering with Women of Colors for multiple of years. And throughout the years, I have learned and experienced a lot of new things, from volunteering at the Code Drive, from volunteering with STEM, from even volunteering at the recent event they had hosted called the Youth Explosion, which not only I volunteered before the event began, but also during the event, I got to take part in volunteering not only that, but also in the film crew. With all that said, I think and I believe that if there's any extra funds out there, it should be granted unto the Women of Colors. Because with all the times I volunteered with them, they have shown me that they are a strong, powerful, influential organization that is really making a big change in this entire community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Christina Yarn.
Hello, my name is Christina Yarn. I'm from Heritage High School, and I'm speaking on behalf of Women of Colors. Women of Colors is a great organization. They helped, they did the Code Deliver, and I love helping volunteer for the Code Drive and giving out the codes to the people I need. They're a very wonderful organization, and they really impact our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Pam Ross McLean. Is Pam here? Let's go to Juwan Swint.
Good evening, council. My name is Juwan Swint, and I'm part of the Women of Colors organization. I reside at 1141 Cannelly Road, Saginaw, Michigan. I'm one of the male prevention team members on the Women of Colors organization. And like Lula said, when she came up here, we were able to work with individuals during the pandemic as far as, you know, drug prevention, and we did things like botting skills, like life-learning skills, stuff like that. And I was new to the Women of Colors, so I jumped in on 2020 when work was slow, and just seeing the impact of what, you know, some of the reviews that got back from people that we trained, that they said the class changed how they look at alcohol, drug, and opioid abuse, which is running rapid right now. And, you know, when I heard that no ARPA funds were given to Women of Colors, I was just like, how is that even a thing? When they've been a part of this community for twenty-five years? Now, my mom, she actually, Evelyn McGovern, she runs Women of Colors. And I remember at five years old, we used to walk through the community with signs, like, on the south side, when the south side was really bad, and carry, you know, signs supporting, you know, reduce crime and neighborhood outreach. And we've been doing that for twenty-five-plus years. And I just want you guys to just reconsider the ARPA funds, if it's any available, because, I mean, the impact that Women of Colors have had to communities, I can't even, if you go look at their office, it's just accolades everywhere. That's how big the impact is. So that's my time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Kristy Phillips.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kristy Phillips, and I have been employed at Women of Colors for a little over two years. And I am the program coordinator there, and I'm also a prevention specialist. And I come before you in support of Women of Colors receiving the city of Saginaw ARPA funds. And Women of Colors, we are proud to be celebrating thirty years of service this year. And when I started working at Women of Colors, I was amazed at all the big things and events such a small organization was able to do. And we do our events in the city of Saginaw. And annual, we do an annual scholarship. We do weekly evidence-based prevention and mentor classes at the high, middle, and elementary schools. We participate and partnership with the juvenile center to teach those students. And we also do onsite classes at local organizations such as TRICAP, RCO, and camp council. We have an annual Code Drive, and twice a month, we have an addiction support group at our site. We have a monthly youth consortium with an amazing annual Youth Explosion event, like the young man was just talking about, that's awesome every year. And we have our SAF program. We do monthly forums that are televised on our Facebook page and on our Women of Color Network. And we also, in saying that, we also have a Women of Colors TV network. And not to mention the many monthly in-person and Zoom meetings that we attend by partnering with the many organizations in our community. We have a small but outstanding part-time staff. And as you can see, we're small, but we are huge, and we all love Women of Colors and are definitely in support of what we do as an organization. And we rely also a lot on our volunteers and our membership members to accomplish what we do. And there are a number of service providers in our community, but there are still more needs than services. And there are currently more requests for our prevention services than we have staff to fulfill, which shows there's a need out there, and we have a need. I was at a meeting not long ago, and a young man came up and said that he was with the youth ambassadors, I think was this group, and he was talking about how when he was in high school and was going through a hard time, and he talked about a group that helped him and got him through and got him to collaborating with other students to just kind of, you know, get through the hard time. And they didn't realize that so many of them were dealing with mental health issues. And when I introduced myself, he came to me and said, ma'am, it was your organization, it was Women of Colors that I'm talking about. And he said, whatever you do, just keep doing it. And they also asked us to go into the elementary school, because one of the members...
Motion to extend the speaker's time by forty-five seconds?
There's a motion on the floor.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
But, okay.
Let's make sure she gets her time, Ms. Todd, all right? Thank you.
But he asked that we start going into the schools in elementary. But there are currently more requests for our prevention services than we have staff to fulfill. And God has blessed our agency to have those thirty years of uninterrupted service, but it has not always been an easy road, and funding is always the driving force in the nonprofit world. We get calls year-round requesting personal items and services, and although we strive to assist as many as we can, there are many that we can't. Support from the city of Saginaw's ARPA funds would be a great asset and opportunity for us to exhale a little bit while continuing the great work we do and service more people in the Saginaw community. We truly need your help and support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Evelyn McGovern.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, Council, City Manager, City Clerk, residents of Saginaw. I'm also a resident at 3075 West Genesee. And I'm just full from hearing all of the previous speakers. And just to hear my son, and it just, I started reflecting on us going in crime-infested neighborhoods, and how much I love this city. It's just unreal. I've given half my life serving this city. And I'm not standing up here for me. I'm standing up here for my community. That's why I'm here. And I know last, the last council meeting, there was a motion made to support us, because we haven't been committed, a cent has not been committed to Women of Colors, but not one cent. And I'm just hoping that tonight, that another motion can be made to give us something. Because what more does an organization have to do to receive support from our city government? Not any other city government, but Saginaw. I've been waiting for an opportunity like this, and now we have it, and it seems like the door is closed. We don't want to wait three months or six months. We want to know now. And like the previous speakers have spoken, if not, why not? Why not? Why we haven't been considered before now? So I thank you for this time, and I just also want to say, Women of Colors, as you heard, we provide education, awareness, and we give individuals hope. And when I was marching those streets, I was a single mom with twin sons, and I brought them, and they marched in the streets with us. And that's what keeps me going. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker tonight is Audrey Beatty.
Good evening.
Good evening.
With all due respect to your total committee, those to whom respect is due...
Beatty, pull it down, pull the mic down so we can hear you.
Just another time, I'm not going to take long tonight, but I do have three questions, primarily. My first question is, what recourse does a citizen or homeowner have when their needs have not been addressed by the land bank? I have a situation where I was not advised when they sold the land right adjacent to my back step, and then, of course, there's a building that sits on the other side of my house, and it's in total disrepair. And I was told that the city doesn't have funds to tear that building down, even though the roof is full of holes and everything, it's in total disrepair. Okay, so much for that one. I'd like to know, what recourse do I have as a homeowner? Okay, and then the next concern is, we have a myriad of needs throughout this community, and we have plenty of community leaders or community residents that have needs, and they're not about to come here to voice their dissension or displeasure here with you. But there are some of us, we could benefit if we could have a meeting place, I don't know if it'd be here or wherever, but where we could come together before you guys spend all the money. And I think it should be some way for us to call an ad hoc meeting where they could bring their issues, the black community, brown community, how, what have you done? Where is a listing of the needs assessments that have been addressed? I just want to see it. Okay, my other issue is, well, I'll just kind of leave it at this, but I really would like to know, why can't we have an ad hoc committee supplied or that's available to the residents of the community? Because all our communities, however diverse they are, they have needs, we have common needs, and they're not being addressed. And I don't know what you guys have done as far as this committee, your dispersment committee, but I really would like to know. And I'm just here, because I'll be coming some more, you know, I'll be coming back, but I just really want to know today, and I want everybody here to know that everybody, God made all of us alike, and every one of us equates to a king. We don't have, no one in here has dominion. No one has dominion over any of us. We're all kings, and we must learn to work together, and we're going to learn how to get together, but we got to address some of these needs, and we got to be able to be vocal and visible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that takes us to council remarks.
Council, you will have three minutes, no extension. No extension. We will start tonight with Councilman Oster.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. The chamber is full, so again, it's nice to see everybody here, and for those watching at home, to come and share your ideas and your opinions. And trust me, I was, if you saw my face, if you were up here speaking under public input, I was very attentively listening to what you were saying, because some of it was some new news to me that I found out recently. So thank you again for coming out and talking. Danita Dorsey, thank you for sharing all that information with me as well. The ARPA overview that you were talking about, I've been reading that myself, and at the very end, I did find there was a link to the Treasury page, and there's been a new document that was just released in January. So within that document, I am starting to try to parse through that myself. The formula that you spoke about is in there, the $10 million, they talk about that too. So forgive me, I'm still getting into this, just back on December 19th, so trying to catch up a little bit, too. And Eric, I'm not familiar with the tracker, so I'm going to be asking for some information on that. So whoever has that, I'd like to see that. If you sent that to my colleague, I'll ask that she send that to me in an email. And Pastor Tatum, I do live in your neighborhood. We're right on the other side of Genesee, and you write, it's a great park, it's a beautiful park, a safe park. So thank you for coming and bringing those concerns to the council as well tonight. I do have your phone number. We spoke before, so it might not be this within a couple of days, but I'm going to try and get back with you pretty soon. So thank you for coming out. Audrey Beatty, it is always good to see you. I've been over to the NAB a couple of times, and I haven't been able to catch you there. But thanks for coming out with that concern, if the property that you're talking about is the 1020 Johnson. I'm sure that our staff will take a look at that. I looked it up when we were here just prior to the meeting, so that is a privately-owned property. But even then, there are some things that we can do for you, complaint system... But even then, there are some things that we can do for you, a complaint system, hopefully we can get something, uh, filed for yet with that. Mr. Gilbert, I hope you're still in the audience. Hi, sir. Uh, for one, number one, thank you for your service to our country and thank you for bringing out and sharing your voice tonight too. And also just everything you do for the Mac Center. One of the programs that I've spoke about here in council a lot was the, uh, the free college and free certificate program, the MI Reconnect Program. Uh, there's been some recent changes under the new legislature with this program. I even had a conversation with the lady who actually, um, developed the program under Governor Whitmer and I was saying, we got to bring that age down. So they've been listening, that age has been reduced to twenty-one now. So folks twenty-one who have not earned a degree or certificate, it's a simple process. I guess you can, you can apply from an app, takes about five minutes. Delta College, especially right here in downtown where the buses run to, there, this is a possibility for you. So those young people li- listening, I don't get an extension. It's okay, but I got it up. Thank you.
Next we have Councilwoman.
Thank you. Good evening, concerned citizens of the community. Um, thanks for coming and speak. It's giving me more information with the ARPA. I'm learning just like everybody else and just to hear everything, um, it's very informative. Like with the reimbursement, kind of reminds me of like homeowners insurance where you have to buy it and then get it replaced. It's kind of a hassle, I understand. So, um, yeah, so it's good to hear all that, the feedback and I don't know the rest of the components as far as the meeting that you guys run, so that's kind of nice to hear the feedback about that as well. Um, so I, I do want to learn a little bit more about that. So I might speak with you, Eric and Ms. Danita, about that and find out. And also I want to say before I forget, um, keep the MSU Spartans in our prayers as they lost their youth last week and, um, I did used to work for MSU Extension and I did, um, present a couple of times at the Calog Center, so it's near and dear to my heart. So please keep those, um, families in your prayers and for those that are recovering still from the injuries they sustained. Um, so yeah, back again with the ARPA. I just appreciate all the feedback. I know I've got to talk to a couple of people from Women of Colors and they're keeping me in the loop, so I appreciate talking to you, um, women, about what you guys are doing in our community and it's great work that you guys are doing and it's been around just as long as I've been around, forty years. So I mean, you guys are doing great work. Um, so I appreciate all that and just let's get through this trying times. I know there's light at the end of the tunnel. So let's just keep praying and that we lead Saginaw, um, in the right direction and also if there's any events, if you can send them, I appreciate it. I went out last night to New Beginning Ministry at the Court Theater. It's a really nice facility and, um, I was able to speak last night for my first time as a councilwoman, so it was a big moment for me. And, um, Pastor Delgado, they invited me, so I'm sure I'll be at some more events soon. So if you guys have anything, let me know. I'm willing to come if I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Happy Presidents' Day, everybody. How many people knew it was Presidents' Day? Right? I was getting my hair cut and I was, I was like, uh, hey, Happy Presidents' Day, person cut my hair. I was like, you know, Joe Biden's in Kiev and he's like, oh, she's like, oh, I don't like him. I was like, well, who's your favorite president? She's like, I don't have one. I was like, but if you had to choose? And she goes, probably President Trump. It's like, I knew it. So, so, still tipped her. If anybody, if anybody wants tickets to the luncheon, the Caesar Chavez Luncheon, I'll pay for six of those. Raise your hand if you want one. So get with the hell after and then I'll foot the bill. If you know four more people, let me know. Getting haircuts and inviting people to dances. To the kids, no, I didn't. I actually owe money this year. But, uh, to the kids that came up to speak, uh, thank you so much. Your, your words have more weight because, uh, you guys have a probably greater assessment, not to knock anybody else that spoke, but you guys have a really great assessment of what matters to our community, I think. So thank you for that. Every Monday I get up and I'm like, ah, I gotta get up in front of people. So you guys are heroes in my book. Ms. Beatty, thank you for talking about the need to consider, uh, assessment, community needs assessment versus risk assessment. We need to really focus on what community needs are versus what the risks of investing in our city is or our city, uh, NPOs, I think. So thank you for talking about that. And then, uh, with the clarification issues, that, that's a larger conversation than I'm sure we're going to be having later on in the meeting. I share some concerns about, um, economic development not being part of, uh, what is able to be given and granted and how we had promoted some of that five million dollars to the behavioral health as a triangle that would increase economic development. Um, there are different loopholes that would allow it depending on what the prob, the, what the whole process and proposal was, but we want to be very careful when we're moving forward about, um, how we're talking about that development because that is not allowed under the rules. And then also, um, I've looked, I brought out my printer and I printed a bunch of stuff. Uh, thank you to Councilman Oster for giving me an updated version. I was going off of the September twenty, twenty, twenty-two version of compliance reporting, but I have a lot of questions that I'll be asking later on in the, uh, meeting, so for clarification's sake. Uh, outside of that, that's it. Thanks so much, everybody. It's good to see everybody.
Next we have, next we have, next we have Councilwoman Copro.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you to our public speakers that shared this evening. Greatly appreciate to hear your heart. Please know that your words resonated in our hearts and I, I echo my colleagues that I think when we get to, there will be a portion just to get some clarification on some questions. I do want to say thank you to my colleagues as well as some of the city citizens who actually checked in on me after I said I had food poisoning. So I really appreciate the city. I didn't expect that, but I really thank y'all who called on me and checked on me on Facebook, so I appreciate y'all. Today, what I wanted to do, um, because I didn't get a chance to do it last week, I wanted to honor, um, two city residents, uh, during this Black History Month. Not only are these great men in our community, but they are Ice Cold Brothers of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. And so I first want to acknowledge, um, a resident, city resident brother George Adams, who's a native of Columbus, Georgia, who came to Saginaw in nineteen sixty-eight to teach in our Saginaw Public Schools. He was the first black male counselor in Saginaw School District. He also in the nineteen eighties, uh, for the basketball coaches of Michigan Association, he was awarded the Country Club Certificate of a Hundred Wins. And remember during this time, it was a challenge getting that support for black basketball teams in our community. Um, he also served as Director of Driving Education for the Saginaw Public Schools and retired from the Saginaw Public School District in two thousand and four as the Assistant Principal of the Saginaw Career Complex. He is a proud member of Bethel Amity Church and he married his college sweetheart Marilyn Avery Adams. They have two alpha sons, four grandchildren and one great-grandchild. He is yet here in our community uplifting young men in our community, being a beacon of light and showing guidance to our generation. The second brother I would like to acknowledge is Brother the Honorable Henry Green Marsh, who is now in the Omega Chapter, who gra, who attended Knoxville College and was a founding member of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity on their campus. He married Ruth on September first, nineteen forty-eight, graduated law school in nineteen fifty, came to the City of Saginaw in April nineteen fifty-four. He was the first elected black mayor for the City of Saginaw and he was named that mayor after some things in nineteen sixty-seven, one of three black mayors elected in the U.S. that year. He was a component. During his tenure, he passed the Open Housing Ordinance and paid out of his own money to go to Washington, D.C. to convince HUD and Vice President Herbert Humphrey that Saginaw should be considered a model city. And Saginaw was selected as a model city in that year. So Saginaw has been a model city in the nation for years and I believe we're returning to that model city. We were even selected as the All-American City in that year. So I want to acknowledge these two great brothers that I have and thank you for your service and community to the City of Saginaw. I think my time is about to be up.
The judge. Next we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone that came up and spoke and the ones that wished to speak and just didn't speak, but someone else spoke some of the same words you may have spoken. Whatever the reason you, uh, come and spend your time with us this evening, I definitely appreciate it. It is so, so welcome, so welcome, no matter what, what you're coming for. It is very welcome. I'd like to take one, two seconds to pause, please, in memory of the persons at Michigan State and their families, if we could just pause in silence. Thank you so much. Um, I too, uh, will be addressing, definitely addressing some of the issues that, uh, some of you all brought today, some of the issues I cannot because I need more information. Uh, Mr. Eggleston, uh, did provide me with some information. I didn't have time to copy and if some of you all know, I like hard copies, so I couldn't even, and I've kind of written on it a little bit, but I'll, I'll give you the co, I'll make sure you all get the copies. A very, very informative tool. Um, and, uh, I believe that's all I, oh, I just turned a year older. Wouldn't tell, could you? So, uh, I'm going to leave, uh, the rest of, uh, the information, uh, that I need to share for later on in council meeting. And again, thank you so very much and keep Michigan State, the alumni, the parents, family, loved ones in your prayers. They need it. We need it. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Next we have Mayor Pro Tem Bench.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Um, thank you to all of our public speakers for being here tonight. Um, we appreciate hearing from you and your continued advocacy for, um, the people that you serve and the needs in our community, um, and the wonderful work that you're doing. So we do appreciate hearing from you guys. I want to say that, uh, had an opportunity, I think with several of our colleagues last week, um, to attend a ribbon cutting for eight new buses for Stars, um, which is a wonderful development for them. Wanted to congratulate them and, um, just, uh, express my excitement over the momentum over Potter Street Depot and the fact that we have the ribbon cutting right out front of there because, you know, Stars is looking at, um, rehabilitating that, uh, that spot and that, what that would mean for that neighborhood and that area over there. Um, just want to congratulate them and then add too, that starting today, Stars expanded their hours, Monday through Friday, five AM to nine PM. I know I get a lot of calls from constituents about that, wondering, um, you know, if those things are going to be expanded and whatnot, and it's nice to see that it is. To specifically, um, those here like Ms. Dorsey, Mr. Eggleston, um, I too would probably have to echo what Ms. Monique said. Um, I don't know enough information specifically about what you guys brought up. Um, I think I have some answers to those questions, um, but I probably will wait till later in the meeting when we can, um, ask questions and, and have more of a dialogue, I suppose, but, um, or at least a dialogue amongst council and staff. But I, I will say that, um, from the get-go, when we had meetings here, I know, speaking as myself, I was very clear, um, that capital was the easiest thing for us to track. It's, it becomes complicated and costly when we go into programming dollars. I know that that poses a conundrum for every agency out there that is doing good work but struggles to, um, come up with the funds upfront or can't commingle their dollars. So I'm hoping that there are ways that we can get to the bottom of it and resolve it. I know that, um, we've had all received an email stating that, um, the, there was the potential for, um, startup costs potentially for people who qualified and it wasn't alone. It was, it was out of their ARPA dollars to get people going because there are some groups that, um, may not be able to do that on their own. But I know, I've tried to be very clear that capital was the way I would like to have seen the money spent, but I'm one vote. Um, and I certainly want to support the agencies that are doing programming. It's just a matter of figuring out how best to administer it. And, um, hopefully we can get some answers for you guys, but, um, here later, I'm in the meeting. But, um, I think that's all I have tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay, so, again, I'm the last one, so I'm going to echo, I thank everybody for coming out speaking. I heard you, loud and clear. I heard everything everybody said. Again, I don't know, I know and I don't know what happened, but we gonna work through this. We gonna work through this. Um, I've just got some quick announcements to make. March is Reading Month. My fellow councilpersons, I need you all to go to, to let me know. I need a day from you. We need to go to Merle Park School to read to the young children. They are asking for our help and our support. Let's give it back. Don't cost you nothing. Just get a book and read it. Okay? Um, then we also are getting geared up and lined up for May fourth, National Day of Prayer and the second Saturday in May, which will be cleanup to meet up, Monique. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Sylvia. You ask me every time, I was, we're going to do it again. The second Saturday in May. There are a lot of things going on in Saginaw right now. We are trying. I know that we don't have all the answers that everybody want. I wish it was a magic wand or I was bewitched and I could took off my nose and make it all better. It's a process. I hear all the time from people, we didn't get any money and I, and I'm, I'm going to say it publicly, there were a lot of people who didn't. And I'm just asking everybody to be patient, to be patient. Yes, we got this money in a swoop and no, we can't spend it in a swoop. And I don't know, I keep hearing people say, but if I'm not mistaken, I've been saying all along, this is cost reimbursement. I've been saying it from this seat right here, that this is cost reimbursement. I also brought up the fact where we decided to do all of this, that it was not fair how we presented it because it should have been constantly said, cost reimbursement, and it wasn't. And so now we're at a dilemma and it's really not a dilemma, is we got to figure out how we can do it because this is not like the PPP where you apply and you just get it and do what you want. No, there's a reporting system that has to come. Thank you so much. I knew it was going to happen. I'm sorry. Madam clerk.
Mayor, we are now at reports from the manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we do have three presentations this evening, so I want to get into those. Um, but just a quick reminder, we have student...
Excuse me, can we do this right quick? Because I know it's getting ready, getting into the, to the meat of the meeting. Anybody that needs to or would like to leave, you are more than welcome to. Now is the time. I didn't want you to empty out the room and know you can't leave. Thank you all for coming. See, we got somebody in the hallway that needs a seat. They are more than welcome to come in now. I'm sorry, Mr. Manager.
That's okay. Just, uh, it wasn't in the announcements yet because it's a while off, but I wanted to remind all council members in case anyone has to get work off. Student Government Day is March twentieth, so that is a meeting that's at noon. And I think that, um, we start with the students at about seven thirty or eight AM. So if you want to be involved in the entire day, uh, it's a, probably would go from about seven thirty or eight until three or four. So just a reminder with that. And we have, um, items on our agenda this, this meeting about our water and sewer rate. So we have three presentations, one on our sewer rate update, one on our water rate update and one on our water and sewer capital project. So first is Andy Campbell and he is CPA and he's the Director of Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors and they currently calculate our sewer rate. So with that, I'll ask Andy to come up.
Appreciate it. Good to see everybody. Again, Andy Campbell with Baker Tilly. Uh, we work with about four hundred communities in the state of Michigan. We work with about 400 communities in the state of Michigan, and we've worked on the sewer rates for City of Saginaw since the Saw Grant a few years ago. So I'm gonna go through a few things tonight. It's gonna be a relatively quick presentation, but I do want to cover a couple of different topics. We're gonna talk about the expected sewer increase that we're hoping that council will adopt tonight. It is a three-year plan. We're gonna talk about the actual numbers that everybody will hopefully experience in terms of what this does to a typical homeowner, try to relate it back to the dollars and cents that a typical homeowner will experience on their bill. We're gonna talk about the capital improvement funding. Capital improvement funding is a significant portion of why we are here tonight to talk about sewer rates. We're also gonna talk about the cash flow, debt, the current debt that's on the system, and then next steps from here. So hopefully, you can see that. It's on, you guys have it on your screen too, right? On your computers?
I have it.
Oh, you have it on there. Okay, gotcha. So I'm gonna get right to the meat of it here in terms of talking about the expected sewer rate increase. We've talked about this for a year now, maybe. My predecessor and mentor, Tom Tracyak, started with the project. He retired at the end of the year, so I took over January 1. And so I get to deliver the presentation here tonight. One of the major things that we wanted to discuss is that sewer rates have not been increased for over 15 years. This has been, the system has been running operationally fine in those 15 years, and a lot of it has come down to really good management on part of administration and council and staff and making sure that everything is running effectively. But with everything coming down the pike with capital improvements, it is definitely the time that is needed to increase sewer rates. As a preview, the capital improvements, and Paul will talk about this in his presentation too, and the capital improvement need over the next 10 years is about $40 million. That is number one reason why we're talking about this tonight. As a preview, I just want to go through where rates are at and how rates are going to be possibly affected, obviously with approval tonight. Everybody in the system pays two different charges. There's what's called the ready-to-serve charge, and then there's a commodity charge, which is based on the usage. The ready-to-serve charge is based on the meter size. So in our presentation, I'm gonna talk about how does this impact a typical homeowner? And your base ready-to-serve charge is $39.65 per month. So with zero use, your resident pays $39.65. That part of their bill is on the sewer side, just for the use of the system. Commonly, that's used for a lot of different fixed costs. Water and sewer systems, and we'll go over the water side here in a little bit too, but there is a lot of fixed costs to maintain systems. It is not as simple as if we don't use the system, we don't have to pay for it. There's a lot of pipes, there's a lot of assets that have a lot of cost, no matter if the system is used or not. The plant, obviously, as well. So that maintains a lot of the fixed costs on the system, and that, again, is charged differently depending on what size meter you have. The commodity charge is currently $4.82 per 1,000 gallons. So for every 1,000 gallons, you pay $4.82, and again, this is just the sewer part of the bill. The typical homeowner pays $58.93 per month. This is just the sewer part of the bill. We're gonna talk about how this will be potentially affected in the future here, but you guys have done a very good job of maintaining everything currently with that fee, and it's really trying to be proactive and looking towards the future of there's a lot of capital improvements that need to get done, and the system has to be self-funded. It is what's called an enterprise fund. We have to make sure that we're bringing in enough money to maintain and fund the system over the life cycle. And so tonight's kind of presentation is about how we've gone basically as far as we can on the rates that we have now, and it's really about making sure that we update and maintain the system so that it is effective for the next 10, 20, 30 years. What we're asking for tonight is an increase to the 23, 24 rates. The typical homeowner's bill will be increased by $2.70. We talked about a number of different scenarios over the past year or so, and we talked about our first scenario actually a couple of weeks ago, and we have decided to propose just an increase on the commodity charge aspect. So as response from council and kind of taking into account feedback from council, we did limit the increase to just the variable rate of the bill. The ready-to-serve charge will remain the same at $39.65, and the commodity charge will go to $5.49 per 1,000 gallons. And again, for your typical homeowner that uses 4,000 gallons per month, that would result in a bill increase of $2.70. When we look at the future here, this is a three-year plan that we are proposing for adoption tonight. The three-year plan is about the same each year. It's that there's rounding and such, obviously, but it's around $2.75 of an increase every fiscal year start. So the first increase will go into effect, obviously, with approval July 1 of 2023. The following increase would be July 1, 2024. The third increase would be July 1, 2025. So essentially, the increase would take effect. We'd have 12 billing cycles, and then another increase, another 12 billing cycles every year with your fiscal year start. And you can see that the, how the typical homeowner's bill is affected over the next three years. One of the things that we did talk about in kind of a positive that's keeping rates in check is that the sewer fund has debt that's falling off. What you can see here is a compilation of the six debt issues that the sewer fund pays for. Currently, the debt issues are around $923,000 per year. It is going down by approximately $100,000 next fiscal year, and then it will further decrease over time as each bond issue falls off. We do expect that future debt will be layered in to take some of its place. That is one of the aspects that we're looking at in terms of how to best prepare for capital improvements in the next 10 years with, actually, I'm gonna go right to that. This is the expectation of capital improvement funding for the next 10 years. It's about $40 million. One of the things that we talked about extensively in the working group is, as a rate consultant, we do bond advising and rate consulting. We do both across the state. As a rate consultant, we really do try to cash fund as much capital improvements as possible. If you're cash funding capital improvements on the system, you're not paying for interest costs, which is a lost cost. You're not paying fees for bond advisors and attorneys. It really does help you save money overall for the ratepayers in the system. And again, this all is money that the ratepayers are accumulating, that's staying in the enterprise and paying for the expenses, including debt and capital improvements on the system. One of the things that we are looking at is the potential to go after state revolving fund money, which is hopefully grant and/or loan, commonly called a bond in our world, especially for, you can see that big number in '24, '25 of about $12 million. This is kind of one of the things that we're targeting and what could possibly change over the next few years, is if we get a lot of grant from the state of Michigan. The state revolving fund is actually, coincidentally, what's been talked about tonight, a lot of the ARPA money that the state has received for their share is being portioned into the revolving fund for water and sewer capital. So they are putting a lot of their funds into that, and the city of Saginaw is in the process of applying for some of those funds. Obviously, we would hope that some of it's grant, but their program is generally speaking a mix of grant and loan. It depends on a number of different factors, but I know that the city is currently applying for that and hoping to receive some of the grant as part of this process. And you have all of the details lined up to receive it. It just obviously is not guaranteed. I do want to stress that with those decisions that we're making in terms of going after revolving fund monies, trying to fund all these capital improvements, the three-year plan does not change if you receive grant. It is more so after the next three years, what happens in the future if you receive grant. The capital funding that you need in the next few years is extensive. There's gonna be more need. If you get grant and we get some of the funding in terms of we get a 50% or 75% grant, there is a lot of other capital improvement needs that need to get done and that can be moved up, or a lot of it can be changed around depending on what the grant potential is. Our recommendation for that three-year plan is to keep everything the same, and then the hope is that with grant funding, we can kind of limit the increases in years four, five, six, and on down the line. So again, like, we are proposing the fiscal year '24, '25, '26 increases tonight, and that the hope is that with extensive grants received from the state, maybe we can, fiscal year '27 on, limit that impact to residents with grants received. This is gonna be really small, but I do want to, a lot of this, we are gonna submit our fancy, final, pretty report with all the graphs and everything here after the decision is made. One of the things that I do want to talk about in this that I have not covered is the use of cash reserves. So one of the things that we talked about is that the sewer fund has a very good cash reserve balance right now and is going to be useful in the next 10 years, especially with the $40 million of capital improvements that's targeted. Just in terms of rough numbers, you can see the exact numbers up there. The cash balance is approximately $20 million to start this fiscal year. If we do anticipate a little bit of grant, but a lot of this is to show, if we don't receive any grant, it is anticipated, even with the rate increases we're talking about tonight, that the cash reserves could be spent down to $5 million in the next 10 years. That's where I'm talking about extensively, that we are hoping that the grants alleviate some of that spend down. We don't really want to go from $20 million to $5 million, but we do take into account the fact that it's melding a lot of different priorities together. If you keep all that money in cash reserves and you don't get grants, then we have to raise rates even higher, which we really don't want to do. So we're trying to balance a lot of different priorities of keeping a reasonable amount of cash, going after as many grants as we possibly can get in terms of both, I know Tom's gonna talk about water and obviously sewer here, going after both sides, trying to get as much grant as we can, trying to keep, I don't know if I said this, trying to keep the cash balance in a reasonable manner, but also the sense that we understand that there are people in different positions for rates. We do have to look at a nominal increase in the next three years, but we don't want to just keep a bunch of cash in our reserves and not limit the impact to ratepayers. So we're trying to balance all of those things together in terms of making a solid plan that we believe is sustainable for everybody. Next steps. Tonight, we're looking for agreement on the adoption of the fiscal year end '24, '25, '26 sewer rates. Again, the typical homeowner's bill average increase is $2.75 per month per fiscal year. It will affect different ratepayers differently depending on meter size and use and such, but that, we do take that into account of just trying to relay that into what your typical homeowner would see. And then also, I think that this is already underway, but we are going through, the city staff is going through the process to apply for grants, hopefully a lot of grants, but grants slash loans with the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, which is the sewer side of the program, to help fund some of these capital improvements. Questions?
Do we have any questions? Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you so much for your presentation. My question would be, would a person that uses, or home that uses less water as opposed to a home that uses more, would this increase be the same across the board?
Not in terms of the whole bill. Let me go back to the breakdown here. So for instance, if you use, let's say, 2,000 gallons, oh, boy, you're gonna test my math skills here, 39.65 plus 9.64, 48, 49, 29? 49, 29? So they're gonna be at 49, 29. If with the new rates, 10.98, that'd be $11, it'd be 60 minus 59, 60, 63? So, oh, boy, what did I just say here? 60, 63. This is the problem of doing your math in your head here. So there, that bill would go up, let's see, so two units would go up, 18.67 times two, 120, 134. So their bill would increase $1.34. I can't remember what I said for the total bill, but $1.34 would be their increase. So it is going to be different depending on usage. Your businesses, for instance, like the, they're gonna have a higher ready-to-serve because they have a higher water meter, thus, the same, so if they have a two-inch water meter, they also have a two-inch sewer ready-to-serve charge. The ready-to-serve charges for all are gonna remain the same. So that is not impacted on any commercial, industrial, residential. It's purely on the commodity. So nominally, the bill will change depending on if you use 1,000 gallons, 2,000, 20,000. That's, it's gonna be a nominal dollar change, so.
Just kind of pennies on the dollar, because we don't want our citizens thinking they shouldn't be using water that they need to use. So, thank you.
Yep.
Councilor, it's Laurie.
Thank you. So with, it wouldn't affect industry or?
Oh, it does. Yeah, it does differently. It affects them differently depending on how much use they have.
Do we know what those increases would be?
Well, it depends on the industry, but like, so the industry pays the exact same commodity charge. So everybody in the city pays the same commodity charge. It's just that some users use 2,000 gallons a month, and industry may use 50,000 gallons a month. They're both gonna be charged the 5.49 per 1,000 gallons. It's just gonna be nominal dollar difference because of their different usage.
And then the amount of residents that use, just city residents that use our water system, it's like 13% or something or less? Isn't it the rest industry and business and?
You're mumbling. Don't nobody hear you.
Oh, sorry. So in terms of just--
How many, are you asking?
Yeah.
How many commercial users and how many residential?
Outside of just the city residents, it's like 87%?
Are we talking water or sewer?
Oh, sorry, sewer?
Do you guys not remember that?
Oh, so sorry.
Paul, do you know the breakdown? If we don't know it, we might not have it off. We'll get that to you, what the breakdown is.
Okay. Thank you.
But it's, the cost is the same.
Okay.
The commodity charge is the same regardless. It's gonna be, it would be 5.49.
And then how did we land on that increase? Could we increase it more to decrease that window of time where we're gonna be relying on grants or?
Well, a lot of it, I mean, a lot of it is trying to alleviate the impact to everybody. Again, homeowners, commercial, industrial, until you find out the grants. So we didn't want to go too much too soon and get a bunch of grants and then overshoot it. Again, I don't think that this, we looked at how to properly fund the sewer fund over 10 years, taking into account where we expect grants to be, where we might think hopefully grants are gonna be, and kind of make sure that we layer that in so that a homeowner doesn't necessarily see like three times that, like, because that's what we're looking at over three years. We're trying to layer in that roughly $2.75 per year instead of doing it as, what's that, six, seven, eight, 25 all at once. We're trying to just be reasonable to the ratepayers as well.
Okay. Councilman, I'm Ash.
Yeah, thank you. Great presentation, by the way, and thank you for coming up that day, spending a couple hours with us so we could really, I want the public to know that we had some very tough conversations that day because you're talking, you're hearing us talk up here. We're worried about the rates. We paid too. And so, and we hear it, trust me, I hear it when I go to neighborhood meetings, which I was at four over the last couple of weeks. But so, the lead service line fee, I'm looking for that, that stays the same too, right?
Yes.
That's on the water side, because we're on the sewer side right now. Okay. Going on to your presentation, you were also talking about $40 million of investment over, now I gotta wait for that too?
No.
I'm sorry.
I just heard the bill go up.
I felt like I was-- I felt like I was under counsel. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Because within that, you were talking about like year 2025, that's where we're going to really be looking at some $12 million capital improvements. Just for the public that are listening, for people that are here, can you just really high-level take a 50,000 mile flyover? Just what are we kind of looking at for some of those improvements?
You're setting up both of these guys, so they're both going to give you presentations on that stuff, so.
So I will wait. And this, this happens too, when we were meeting, when we were meeting that day, we were going from sewer to water and back and forth, so it's hard to keep, yeah, keep track of what we're doing. All right, I'm good for now, thanks.
Councilman Culpey.
No, I was just going to say, I had to give that clarification in our meeting, there is a difference between how many actually we support with our sewer and how many we have with our water department, which they're going to clarify a little later, so.
Yep.
I just want to say, Andy, I sat in on the meeting with a couple of council persons, and I'm going to tell you, every time I go into a meeting, and Paul and most of the staff will attest, my favorite question is, how much? How much is this going to affect the residents? Because it's just me and my house, but the house I'm in is a family house, so it was, the water tanker stuff was big for all of us, it's one person now. And so, when we talk about 1,000 gallons, I just think that's a lot of water, but it don't matter, I'm going to get charged for 1,000 gallons, at least a minimum, every month. And in the summertime, okay, well, you know what, I've been, I've been asked to that question, and in the summertime, the part that's really crazy is, sometimes I pay less for the water in the summer, and I'm watering the grass and flowers. So, you know, it was real enlightening to hear your presentation, and I thank you for that. Any other comments for this young man? Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Andy. So our next presentation is from Thomas Beckley, who is Vice President for Raftalus Financial Consultants, and they have been, they've been calculating our water rate for quite a long time.
Yep, I've been coming here for 15 years or so, this, I've been in front of this council several times before, so it's good to see this council and mayor again. Just to address a couple things that were just said before I forget them. In terms, Mayor, your comment, certainly if you're single, living in home, you may use less than 1,000 gallons a month. And say, just as an example, you used 500 gallons every month, you would actually only get a volume charge every other month, because we, the city only bills in thousand gallon increments, not everybody does it that way. But basically what would happen is you're, you have a meter, and it would only click over then to the next 1,000 gallons every other month. So you would only pay for 1,000 every other month, if you used 500 gallons, is an example.
It don't matter, I want my water, also, I just pay whatever y'all do.
I'm sure, well, we appreciate that. Just, and one of the other comments is, is there is a big difference between the water and sewer utility in terms of the areas served. Andy had something up that showed the breakdown of revenue between inside city and then our wholesale customers. On the sewer side, it's 85% of the revenue comes from inside city, over 85, so less than 15 from outside city. When we start talking about water, we're going to be talking about retail rates today Inside city only pays about 25% of the revenue for the water utility, because the water utility really serves this entire region, unlike the sewer utility. So, but that's, to some extent, that's one of the challenges the water utility faces too, because we actually generate about the same amount of revenue, sewer's a little over 20, water's a little over $22 million in revenue, and so we're only generating $6 million of revenue from the city. And then when we have some expenses, it hits the inside city a little harder, because there's so much less revenue. So, you know, one thing I want to focus on is that the water utility, and the sewer utility too, we deliver safe and reliable service to the citizens of Saginaw. We deliver water on demand, 24/7, 365. Clean water, safe water. And then people can drink it, bathe in it, cook with it, and then we take the water back, the sewer utility cleans it, puts it back in the river, just as clean as when we took it out of Lake Huron. On the water side, we do this all for less than a penny a gallon. So you can turn on your faucet and get a gallon of water, and it costs you less than a penny. So in terms of the rate study process, what I'm going to talk about today, there's three important steps to the rate study process. There's the financial plan, which basically tells us how much money we need. Revenue requirements, how much money we need to spend, and then revenue, how much we need to bring in to cover those revenue requirements. Then there's cost of service. And the cost of service is especially important in the water utility because of what I just mentioned, that we have a lot of these outside city customers, and we need to fairly allocate costs between those customers and the inside city customers. And then finally, there's rate design. How do we actually recover the rate? And like, the important decision in terms of our retail rates is, something that was touched on in the sewer study, is how much should be fixed revenue versus how much is volumetric revenue? So to accomplish financial planning, the first step of that process, we take a look at baseline revenue. How much money would we generate over the five-year forecast period that we focus on if we didn't touch rates? So we project how much will be sold, and then how much would we generate under the existing rates if we were able to get by with no rate increases? Then we forecast operating and maintenance expense, how much we need to pay employees, how much we need for chemicals, vehicles, things like that. Then we develop a cash flow forecast. And that cash flow forecast then includes capital financing, what capital improvements are needed to continue to deliver safe and reliable water service to the citizens of Saginaw and this entire region. And then we assess the revenue sufficiency. Basically, this is a comparison of how much would we generate under existing rates versus how much do we need, and that tells us, do we need to increase rates? And typically, you know, when we doing one of these studies, the reason we're doing the study is because we know we will likely need to increase rates. So one thing I want to talk about is several key factors that are really affecting revenue sufficiency. And a lot of these factors are not unique to the city of Saginaw. So one is declining per capita demand, and this is not a factor that is unique to Saginaw in any way. We see this everywhere we go to do work, whether it's a thriving, rich city, or, you know, a city that's recovering. In general, demand is declining, and there's several reasons for this. One is because rates keep going up, and that, to some extent, keeps people from using water. Another is just a general ethos of conservation that's really driven into people these days, that water is a precious resource that should be conserved. And then the third is that every time somebody puts in a new fixture, every time somebody puts in a new clothes washer, every time somebody puts in a new dishwasher, it's going to use less water than the one it replaced because of conservation standards that have been implemented by the federal government. And then finally, there's capital requirements, and there's just aging infrastructure we're dealing with, as well as regulatory requirements that are passed on by the government. So just to give you a little better insight into this decline per capita demand, when we look at our total water production here in the city of Saginaw, it's declining at half a percent a year. And this includes our outside city customers that aren't facing some of the same challenges that we faced inside the city. And so this, this has a natural effect of, we would have to raise rates even just to cover this, because quite frankly, as our demand declines half a percent a year, most of our costs don't decline. We can't get rid of 0.5% of our employees every year, we can't stop maintaining 0.5% of our assets, a vast majority of our expenses are fixed regardless of how much water we sell. The only real variable components to our expenses are chemicals and electricity, which make up less than 10% of our expenses. Another one which I'm sure everybody is familiar with, but it always bears mentioning, is utilities face the same inflationary pressures as every citizen faces, every business faces. Our chemicals are going up in price, our supplies are going up in price, our, we have to pay our employees more to be competitive. And so, of course, you know, I've been doing this just over 22 years. First 20 years of me doing this, it was real easy, 2% to 3% inflation. It's been like that for 20 years. Then all of a sudden, in the past two and a half years, things have gotten, I wouldn't even say crazy, I know that these inflationary environments existed when I was a kid, in the late, in the early 80s, late 70s, but we're in an environment unlike any we've seen for literally generations. And so, but we face those insane inflationary pressures. So it's just something to keep in mind, that, you know, we're asking for increases to help offset some of these expenses. Paul and I were talking earlier today about specific examples, and the price of chlorine, which is an important chemical in water treatment, has risen in price by over 400% in the past two years. And the final one I mentioned was capital needs, and there's two things driving this. There's, you know, maintaining our existing infrastructure, and then, of course, regulatory requirements. There's the lead and copper rule, and I know one of the council members mentioned the lead service line fee. We are not planning on increasing that, that's going to stay at 6.71 or 6.81, whichever one it, 6.91, sorry. I couldn't remember the exact amount, but we do not plan on increasing that. And we were fortunate, as I'm sure you know, that we received a $5 million grant that we were actually, you know, didn't, because we introduced this lead service line fee when I was here four years ago. I was giving the same presentation four years ago, and that was when we first rolled out this lead service line fee to address the then relatively new Michigan lead and copper rule. Saginaw was really on the leading edge of implementing a funding source to actually address that rule. And we received this $5 million grant that is going to allow us to hopefully complete that project sooner, and at less expense to the city. We've also recently received a $15 million grant for an elevated storage tank. And the staff continues to explore opportunities. I mean, we've been fortunate that there's been more money available through grants, as well as through the SRF program in recent years than in times past, through both ARPA money, as well as the Joint Infrastructure Act. So on the water side, you know, I know Andy mentioned on the sewer side, there's about $40 million capital improvements over the next 10 years. On the water side, it's more like $100 million in the next six years. It's even greater. Now, part of that is, as I mentioned, it's a bigger system, actually, so there is a lot more expense out there. But, you know, there are some things that need to be addressed, and there's still some even greater potential ones down the road, but in terms of what's required just to continue to deliver safe and reliable service to this region, this is what the capital plan is. And Paul's going to give a presentation, get a lot more detail on this than what I have. So overall, the water utility financial plan. One thing I want to emphasize is, Andy mentioned that sewer rates haven't been raised in over 15 years. Water rates, of course, we've done increases, I've been in front of this council before. We did skip 2023, though, so on July 1, 2022, there was not a rate increase. When I presented the last financial plan four years ago, we had intended to have an increase on July 1, 2022. And so that was skipped. So there's been a 0% increase for 24 months, and so we did get, we did get a 24-month hiatus before starting this next plan. So overall, we need approximately 7% more revenue from the system over the three-year plan that we're proposing for tonight. And this will fund the increased operating costs, as well as the capital improvements that are necessary, while maintaining a reasonable level of cash reserves and meeting debt service coverage requirements. Rate adjustments are on July 1 each year, and this results in a retail impact of under $3 per bill, and I'm going to have a lot more detail on the impact per bill for the mayor, as she asked for. So this is, overall, this is what it looks like for a typical, these are the proposed rate changes on the, as you can see, service line replacement, there's no increase in the 6.91, as I mentioned. Readiness to serve, we will increase that by approximately 8% a year, and then the commodity charge will increase by approximately 8% a year. And so you see, on the typical residential cost, we're using 4,000 gallons a month, the bill increases a little over $2, getting up to $3 in the third year of the plan. So in terms of, again, this is a similar thing, water only, it still results in our customers paying less than a penny per gallon of water delivered to their faucet on demand, 24/7, 365. And the bill impacts are shown in detail on the left. But what I think may be of more interest is when you and everybody else gets their mail or in the month, you know, each month from the city for this, they call it the water bill, but the water bill really is water and sewer combined. And so this combines what Andy talked about previously with what we've presented, in terms of what's the total impact, because this is what really matters to the citizens, I'm sure the mayor would agree, is what the water bill is going up. And so you can see, on July 1, 2023, for a customer using 4,000 gallons a month, of course, everybody's usage may be different, but, you know, based on analysis, this is a typical bill, it would go up $5.01, and then a little more in the future years than that. And something we added even since we met with you, Mayor, a few weeks ago, is, this is what, this is an actual, what the actual bill looks like that your citizens receive, at least that's what I'm told, I don't receive one. So you can see, again, what's on the top is what their current bill would be for 4,000 gallons a month, and then you can see what changes under these proposed for going into effect July 1, to show the $5.01 increase. So this is what the actual bill that your customers would receive would look like then. So that's the end of my prepared presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much for your presentation. One of my concerns would be that I'm missing several pages, probably a couple of columns or at least a column. Can I get the other part? I don't have it all.
I apologize for that.
I have like five and a quarter, like say, for instance, if you can see that from here, I have several pages that are not complete.
Okay, well, I can send you the PDF, that should be complete. I will, I will send that to Paul, and he will make sure you get it. Or he, I know you said you prefer hard copy during the meeting, I was listening. I'm sure Paul can make sure you get a good hard copy.
Please do, because it's on several pages that I'm missing. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Any questions on this end? Councilman Flores.
Thank you. Thank you for the water graphics also, it helped me concentrate. I can understand why Mr. Campbell can't do that with sewer. I have a question about the retail rate plan?
Yes.
So it's 8% each year?
Yes.
So, so would it be 24% total?
Well, it would be more like 25% because of compounds, but yeah.
Okay, per 4,000 gallons, and that would just be across the board for every consumer?
For the inside city, now, outside city, we have contracts for that have a slightly different methodology, and so their increases are sometimes higher, and actually, even among all our wholesale, we have 20 wholesale customers, their increases vary. Some of them are less than 8%, some of them are more than 8%. It just varies based on different factors that are embodied in the wholesale contracts we have with them.
How long, what's the life of the contracts usually?
Ooh.
Oh, wow. It's a long one.
And basically, they go on unless, unless both, unless one party agrees to cancel it, because there was a period, when I first started doing work here 15 years ago, most of the contracts, if not all of them, were expired. But basically, these contracts, they state, unless one party opts to cancel it, they continue.
Okay. I think that was the part where I was talking about, where it was, although it's 25% in city, some of that is still business, and?
Yes, and then the wholesale customers are seeing increases as well. They vary, because again, basically, we calculate, there's a pretty complicated cost service process that allocates the cost to each wholesale customer, and they vary from going up, I don't remember the range, but I can tell you, some of them are less than 8%, some of them are more than 8%.
Okay, so the fact that the life of the contracts are that long, that's kind of what pushed us into this?
Well, it's benefit, I mean, those wholesale customers, like I said, they're paying 75% of the revenue of the water utility. And you've got to keep in mind that they do not receive the same level of services our retail customers. Basically, we deliver water through big pipes to them at a certain point, and then they have to provide retail service, whereas we have to, we provide retail service to all our customers. And so we provide that added level, layer of service to our customers of the small pipes running down each individual street, small meters, customer service billing, which they receive customer service and billing, except they only get one bill for a huge amount. So there is a different level of service that our retail customers receive. Then, of course, on top of that, there's the lead and copper rule, which is a retail-only cost as well.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Councilman Copeland.
Just to make sure I'm clear, and there is clarification, as we talk about the retail increase, there will be conversations with our wholesalers based on the contract that we have about how their rates will also be affected, and we will not be the only one seeing an increase.
Yes.
All wholesalers will be seeing it.
Yes, all the wholesale customers are seeing increases as well. We actually, the process we've been using since, you know, we negotiated the new contracts, 2005-ish to 2010, 12-ish, and then we established a process where we meet with the wholesale customers. We have one-on-one meetings with them to make sure that, you know, they understand why their rates are going up, because like I said, on the water side, they are an important component to our water utility, because they provide 75% of our revenue.
Yeah, just a quick question. More of a question and a comment, because you've been, we've been talking about lead and copper rule, right? I've been talking about this since it was passed, past council I was on. What does come up in the neighborhoods when we talk about this, and I just recently had a conversation with Phil Carwad, is that, so you got a grant. So right now, we currently only got a $4.5 million grant, which, and I think it's good for the residents to know that we use that money to contract out to expedite this process a little bit faster, and we're still going through the inventory process of inventory. Because that was another question, well, have they been to my house yet? And I said, well, if you get a big circle in your right of way, you'll know that they were there to inventory your property. So, but these are things that do come up at the neighborhood associations. I'm hoping, and I'm optimistic, because there's still money that was allocated through these new infrastructure bills, again, it has to work itself through the process to the state, the state's got appropriate to the city. So even in the last presentation, those one- or two-year windows, again, so the public knows, that's also very important, that we're working on it. You know, cross your fingers that we get some more money, especially on the lead and copper side, because there was a lot of money allocated for that, and they heard it in the news. So thank you.
Yeah, and you're right, because with the joint infrastructure bill, that introduced money for a four-year period that we're still kind of in the middle of. And so there will be more money than typical over the next two years, then maybe something will happen again after that, or, you know, and even in the SRF program, things can change. One of my clients, who's a very, very large water supplier in south, or sewer utility in southeast Michigan, turned back in a $65 million SRF loan, which means that the SRF program now has $65 million. They were planning on loaning to somebody that now they will want to loan that to somebody else, so there are opportunities that you have to be ready for to get in line for.
And grants can come out at any time, whenever they decide. Thank you.
Yeah, because actually, that loan had a $10 million, or 10% principal forgiveness in it, too. So there was $6.5 million grant money that got turned back in, because they said they didn't want to pay the 90%.
Okay, well, thanks for allowing me that little bit of time, because you've got a bigger audience right now than just some neighbors in an association meeting. Thanks.
Again, Tom, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I always ask questions, but I look at it that every time we nickel-dine, penny-pinch our residents, there are people who are actually on fixed incomes.
I understand.
And who I'm not going to hurt is our seniors, because they sacrifice a lot to make sure their bills get paid. So I just want to, I'm always going to say to you guys, how much? And if there's going to be too much, then we got to find some money somewhere to offset some of this stuff. Again, I know that Paul and your department is really, really working hard. I spoke about y'all, I gave you kudos. Let me give you your kudos again. If we're just not looking at a sewer bill changing something, and we maintain that long, I think we've done relatively well. And thank you so much. Now, one other quick question. I don't know, is this going to be a handout?
So that is something we just finished today, again, based, literally, after we met with you, Mayor, two weeks ago, I sat down with Paul and recommended we create that, that document, and Paul gave us, quite frankly, a very little bit of money to do that, and we did that, and we prepared that for you, and that got finalized today. But that's exactly what that's for, is, and it was interesting, because then in the second meeting we had with some council members, I believe it was Councilmember Copeland said, you know, you should have a handout that we can hand people. And I said, you know what? That's exactly what we're working on, and hopefully that addresses some of your needs for communication with your constituents.
I think it's great, because it tells you exactly where your dollar went to.
Yeah.
So the citizens can see, you pay this much for this, and you can actually see it. So it's a good thing.
And, you know, it's, you know, one thing that, you know, I'm sure a lot of people don't appreciate is that we have that 65-mile pipeline to go way up on Lake Huron, up to Whitestone Point, to get us good, clean, safe water. And, you know, that's obviously become a bigger issue in recent years, and that's why, you know, several years ago, Bay City signed on to get that same good, clean, safe water that we get from Whitestone Point.
So thank you so much. I'm sorry. Yes.
Oh, I just wanted to kind of piggyback on what you said. Now, with this, can this be condensed, and is it available for the citizens of Saginaw? How do they get a copy of this? Can we?
Paul's going to talk about that.
Okay.
Because, like I said, that's something, like I said, after our meeting a couple weeks ago, we kind of went to the drawing board and came up with that to kind of provide, to hopefully provide your constituents with something that's relatively straightforward.
Okay, thank you so very much.
You got questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
You ask, but not least.
That's right. Paul Reinsch has an update for Capital Projects.
Okay, I have a Capitol presentation on both the sewer and the water. I'll try to keep this relatively quick, but I thought you might appreciate, as Councilman Ostache mentioned, that knowing kind of where some of this money has been spent and where it's going to be spent. So with sewer, recently completed, primary settling tank, one repairs. You can see the condition of the bottom of the tank, the kind of damage that was going on, and on the right, you can see the processes they were taking care of that, those issues and repairing. Let me back up real quick. And about, that was about a million-dollar project. And in this picture, you can see after, pretty much finished the project, what it looked like and what kind of result we had there. We also had bought, purchased a couple of pad mount generators at a cost of about $1 million total for the 14th Street CSO and Y Street CSO for dual power source. One thing I can say real quickly here is that consumers, when, more recently, in the last few years, if you have entities like our CSOs and our pump stations and that, you're supposed to have dual power sources, so that you have extra ability to provide power. But consumers started charging a lot of money for a second-line feed to our stations. So what we've done is we found it's actually cheaper to put in these generators than it is to pay the fee for a second-line feed from consumers. And then the other thing we found, too, is consumers has told us that they can still provide additional power to us if needed, but they don't want to have to have that second-line feed necessarily. So anyway, that's partly why we do that. So that's some of the work we've done. And then here's another one that we recently completed, an amount of about $2.7 million. We replaced some '70s vintage outdoor switchgear, some '50s raw sewage pump motor starter panels, and a power substation number one. It also included some wiring and updated SCADA for remote electric monitoring. But anyway, you know, these things don't last forever. We have to update them as we, as we're able. So that was also completed. So here are some projects that we anticipate to complete by June 30. Primary settling tank four, similar to number one. We have to do some influence channel repairs that we're working on currently. They didn't get done before the season, so we're hoping to get them done this spring, but it's about $100,000 that you approve for that project that we're currently working Projects in design and planning, CSOs and RTBs are the same thing. CSO is combined sewer overflow, RTB is retention treatment basin, just a different way of saying the same thing. We're also looking at the second wastewater tree on Plant River Crossing. The original was placed in, this is new projects. The original was placed in 1947 at a, we're actually thinking that the new one, I don't know what the cost was in '47, but the new one would be probably $20 to $25 million. And that's one of the ones that we're going for SRF funding for, because we know that that's a lot of money, and we want to try to keep the impact to the customers down. So we're working on that. We do have an intent to apply submitted for Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund. And the other one, you've already seen when we talked about ARPA, but the Hancock CSO and RTB, same thing, due to the deteriorating concrete. You allocated about $3 million from the city ARPA funds to do the parking structure, but we still need about $5 million to do the basin itself repaired, the repairs to the basin itself. So, and it's actually a two-phased approach, as you see Phase 1. So here are some of the pictures of the deterioration. You did see these before, but I thought I'd show them again. That's happening, and that is within the basin that you're seeing there. A lot of that is from hydrogen sulfide gas in the basin itself and deterioration of the concrete from the gas. So the second phase is estimated that it would be necessary in about 15 and 20, 15 to 20 years after Phase 1. So we got a little bit of time to do the second phase, but that will be needed at some point. Another project we're looking at doing is the 14th Street cleanout and concrete lining. You can see all the brush and everything that's grown into that ditch, and it needs to be addressed. So that's about a $300,000 project there. Another $500,000 for chlorine feed system improvements at the, this is at the CSOs. So now, projects that were in the design and planning stage four, those were all projects that we were hoping to get done. Failing concrete structure, as you saw, that's the same picture from before, but it's pretty consistent with what some of the concrete failure we're seeing. We're planning for about $1.5 million to repair those kinds of problems. We're looking at what we're going to do with disinfection, partly because of the cost of the chlorine that we just brought up, how expensive the chlorine is getting. We're starting to look at other possible processes for disinfection that would be less expensive and more cost-effective for us all. This is actually a ferric chloride tank that you're seeing there. Rough estimate to repair it is about $200,000. It's nearing the end of its life, and it's leaking, so we need to remove it and correct it. We do have another one that's still in service and in good shape, so we need to get this taken care of. And then one we're working on in addition is improvements to our solids handling and storage, and that's basically the bio solids program, where we apply sludge from the wastewater to fields for crops and that kind of thing. Very important for us. If, so far, RP phosph levels have been good, but if we end up in a situation where they are lower to the point where we can't do solids application, it could be a big deal. So we're hoping that doesn't get that far. But we've been fortunate in that regard. Just quickly, this is the maintenance and service televising truck for inspecting sewer lines for asset management. So that is a truck that we purchased and allows us to inspect the lines. Here's a quick picture of some cleaning and inspection, and what you're seeing on the left is the lining of what North Charles Sewer looked like before lining and after. This is a much, what would I say, more cost-effective way to address sewer than digging it up and replacing it. So this is an example of some of the things we're doing out there. So future projects, continued RTB upgrades, wastewater treatment plant, we need some air blowers and rotoric operators and things like that, sluice gate upgrades, ongoing collection system improvements, and ongoing cleaning, televising, inspection, and repairs. So it's an ongoing thing, right? We have to keep investing in our system to keep it up, keep it in good shape, and continue to provide you the service you're used to. All right, so with that, we'll go to the next PowerPoint, which is on the water system. You know what I've forgotten, what did you ask again that I was going to talk about? I've forgotten what it was.
The sheet.
Oh, the sheet. Yeah, the way that I, Vicky and I are working on that, what we're going to do with it, but I'm thinking we'll put it online, you know, on the website. It could potentially be a Billstuffer. We might be able to provide a link to it, or we could put it on our Facebook page, those kind of things, to give people access. And of course, we can have printed copies out and available at the, you know, at City Hall here for people to take if they would like. So there's a number of ways we could use it. All right, so let's move on to the water. So recently completed projects on the water side. This is from about 2017, 18, is the Davis Road project. What we had there was a transmission main for raw and finished water that ran down that road, on Davis Road, that at the time it was installed was a dirt road, and it was quite shallow. They put it in with a drag line, these lines. So they were only in places three or four feet below the surface of the road, and we didn't want to risk the loss of our water supply, so we did this in preparation for the Davis Road improvements that the county was going to do. And that was about $20 million project. We did a few things with it. We did the transmission main movements, and also we did abandonment of the mains that were existing in the road, as well as some improvements at Cottsville Pump Station, which I'll show you. So here's some of the transmission line work. What you're seeing there is a bypass that we put in to maintain our supply while we were working on the lines, but you can see the scope of it, and I can tell you, I was there. That's, the picture on the far right was after all night long, the sunrise. So we were there all night long many times. This is some of the improvements done to the Cottsville Pump Station. There was a new VFD-driven pump that more matches our current needs for raw water flows, and it much more matches what we need at this time. That was done as part of that project. Another thing that we've done recently is we moved the original Caterpillar trailer mount generator. We originally purchased it for Cottsville, but it turned out that we found that the Kohler, not Kohler, the Waukesha generators at the treatment plant that are inside of it are nearing the end of their service life, so we decided to move this because of its size. It's a, I'm trying to remember, 2-point, no, 1.6 megawatt generator. These generators that are in the plant are 1.2. There's one on each feed line, but this generator will take the place of those at some point, and will also, between it and our elevated storage, leave us in good shape for power loss. So we moved that to the water plant because of the problems and the needs of the Waukesha generator repairs that we had to do. This is a minor project, Freeland Pump Station roof repair. Our own staff did that. I just thought I'd show it as something that our, this is out on Freeland Road, just east of Lawndale. So some anticipated projects to complete by June 30. The Cottsville Raw Water Pump Station Improvement Phase 2 is currently under construction. We are replacing one of the large constant-speed pumps, which I'll show you in a picture in a minute, with a second VFD-driven pump, like the one that was in Phase 1 I showed you. We are adding a pad mount onsite generator for the needs of the Cottsville site. Cottsville is a raw water storage facility. There's 180 million gallons of Lake Huron water stored there for our needs if something happens to the pipeline supply. We're also adding some blending capabilities at a cost of about $2.36 million. So here's the old dual-speed pumps that we had at Cottsville. We still have one, number four, that's in the foreground there. That pump's still there. Pump five is being removed, and we're retaining the parts and so on as backup to our existing pump, the number four that's remaining. So that's part of what's being done. You can see on the left, that's the sister VFD-driven pump, the one that I showed you in the original Phase 1 is behind it there in the picture. And then on the right is, we put a new actuator on the ball valve for pump four. Reason we did that is ball valves are good for throttling, and if we needed to throttle, we could put, with an actuator, we could set it at different points and get the flow we wanted from that larger pump. And if we needed to throttle, we could put, with an actuator, we could set it at different points and get the flow we wanted from that larger pump if we ended up in that situation and need. So we just added a operator. And there's the new pad mount generator. It's, if it hasn't been tested, it will be shortly. It's nearing effective service. And, okay, not going forward. There we go. Because I just didn't push hard enough. Another project that we did with maintenance and service is on our transmission system to one of the wholesale customers, Frankenmuth, the city of Frankenmuth and Frankenmuth Township. The line that feeds them on Junction Road has some hot soils and that main keeps breaking. And it particularly likes to break when there's something big going on like winter fest or something like that. So we put in a parallel mine, main for that at a cost of 2.47 million. That is nearing completion now. So those are some of the things we've been working on, some projects we're working on now. As you know, we, the lead service line replacement, we talked about that. We got a $5 million principal forgiveness loan, essentially like a grant. And we hope to get more of those so that we can either keep that fee low or even end it sooner if, if it turns out. One thing I wanted to mention, just so everyone knows, water systems are allowed to make a profit. We're not legally allowed to be profitable. We can keep a reasonable, reasonable amount of fund balance for emergency need. And that, I'm trying to set that up for four to six months worth of operational cost to have on hand for our needs. And a good example of that is the pandemic. You know, we didn't, we actually held back on some of our work that we planned to do because we weren't sure what was going to happen to our revenue stream during the pandemic. So that's partly why some of this didn't happen as quickly as we originally thought. So anyway, moving on. There's the elevated storage tank. That's an architectural rendering. To be honest, I think it's going to be bigger than that. It's going to be a fairly large tank, but we have about $15 million in grant. The connections that will be required are going to cost us about $4.5 million. Here's the, some gear for the new generator. The reason we're doing this is, and I won't go into great detail, but consumers is planning on shutting down the baseload plant at, in Essexville, the current plant. And that's the last one in the area. And they're doing it a year earlier than they originally said. So we're putting in this automated start gear for our generators to help us respond if, if we lose power due to unknown event. You know, either a brownout, a blackout or something like that. And the reason that's so important is there's two things that protect your water supply that are in it every day, pressure and chlorine. If we lose either one of those, we can have contamination. So it's very important that we provide that pressure until we can get power back on and the pumps running again. So that's why this interim project for the generators is so important. And then as time goes by, after elevated storage is installed, we'll be able to more effectively be prepared for any kind of a loss there. The Treatment Observation Study, that's still to be determined. We have done some studies and so far we've found that we can make do with a lot less investment than we originally thought. But we're looking at disinfection by products control. We're looking at corrosion control for lead and copper. And, you know, we use what's called lime stabilization, but there are other methods. So we want to make sure we're using our best method to protect our public. This is one we wanted to do and we were planning to do, but it turned out to be way more expensive than I thought we could afford. So we're reevaluating that. It's, it turns out it's a $37 million project. When I first started looking at it, I thought it was about a $6 million project. So I'm rethinking that one. And so will Mike as time goes by. So we'll, we'll look at that approach moving forward. There is some masonry repairs and roof work that's needed at the water treatment plant. That's estimated at about a million dollars coming up. Some smaller project here with, you can see additional concrete deterioration. That's in the train shed under, in the back of the water plant. And then Kochville boiler that needs replaced, it's original. Similar to the Frankenmuth main, the birch run parallel line that we're looking to do is in the same, the original line is in the same kind of soil. So we're having regular breaks and you can see that's what a picture of is a water main break there as you see it running down into the ditch. So we're also looking at that at a cost of about 3.6 million. Some additional future projects is we're looking at both finished and raw water transmission improvements. Water treatment plant options, you know, what are we going to do with that? This plant is nearing 100 years old. So we have to decide, are we putting more money into this plan? Are we going to look at maybe another one? We'll have to decide that. You will all have to decide that at some point. I am doing studies to help us make a decision on what makes the most sense financially for that. And then the ongoing distribution and lead service line replacements. With that, we'll end because time is short. So, any questions?
There any questions?
Okay.
Thank you so much, Mr. Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, that concludes what we have prepared for this evening.
Do we have, all questions have been asked, right?
For the presentation.
For the, pardon me.
For the presentation or for the managers?
For the presentation. Now, are there any questions for the city manager?
I have a few.
Two.
Two?
I'll, I'll take, I'll do two. For this reimbursement issue that was brought up during public comment. We were given a letter about the possibility of the Treasury involving heavily monitoring ARPA spending in the coming years. I suspect that there's going to be heavy monitoring. Has there been any internal information to make that assessment?
Regarding the ARPA funding, if there's going to be heavy monitoring?
Yes.
I think that's a given with the amount of money we've been allocated. Along with additional guidance that's been put out by Treasury with, which does require us to do the, the risk assessment portion of this, yes.
But when I looked, so I looked through the project and expenditure report user guide and then the compliance and report user guide. And there's other, there's avenues for beneficiaries versus subgrantees. There's avenues for cash grants. There's avenues that seem pretty extensive and not in line with what I've heard from the city. And I point to page 33 of the project and expenditure report, talking about public health and negative economic impact. Those would be under the NPOs that we gave the funds to, right, of the bucket.
I don't have what, you, you, you didn't forward any of the information to me, so I don't have what you're talking about in front of me. But what we are doing with the organizations that were granted funding, I think we consider to be best processed and is in line with what our consultant is doing in, in other communities. And there are, there are other ways that you grant, can grant the funds out. And I think there won't all be subgrantees. I think there's other agreements that can be, but the meetings that I think have been held so far, they will be subrecip, subrecipient grantees under the Treasury guidance.
But I've checked with peers from the city council in Detroit about this type of approach. And when the original presentation from Guide House came down, they said that they were part of that consulting group for the city of Detroit as well. This, the council member that I spoke with was not familiar with this type of reimbursement approach.
Okay.
So it, it isn't being done.
It is being done in other communities this way.
Not with the ones that I checked.
But we're not going to go back and forth.
But we have to, because there's public interest, but we should talk about this in public.
Let me give kind of a example, because I think there are, there were things said that I, I don't think are accurate. And there is past experience that we have in the city of Saginaw with grants. And, and I, I don't know that all of council has that information because it goes back a number of years. So our responsibility as fiduciary managers for the city of Saginaw is to safeguard the taxpayers' dollars. That's one of our biggest responsibilities. Years and years ago, the city of Saginaw did not have the internal controls that were necessary to do that. And we had significant issues in this city. Significant issues, both internally and externally with subgrantees. And I started as a finance director in 2009. And when I got here, we had, I can just give you a few examples. We had funds that were embezzled from the city that were not being paid back. There was an agreement, criminal charges in an agreement, and no one in the city had followed up on that. We had a subgrante for funds, that was a pass through funds, that I believe was somewhere in the neighborhood of 19 missed quarterly grant reports. We've had federal programs where the recipients or the contractors were not appropriately monitored, which caused us significant issues and didn't get the done, the jobs done right in the community. And that still impacts us today. So all of those issues go into our history of dealing with funds that may not be the same as other cities that you call. And there may be other ways to do it. But this is what we believe is, is the best practice for the city of Saginaw. Now we, a lot of this does mirror what we do with block grant. It's not the same funds, but it is federal funds. And many of the organizations that applied are familiar with those, those requirements. So I'd say that. And two, I, I don't know if there's some, I wasn't in any of the meetings, but what I indicated in my memo to council is that there is the possibility of an advancement of these grant funds. And I think that's what Guide House was communicating that was referenced. So it may be reimbursement, but that doesn't mean that you necessarily have to have that money in advance. So as the manager and the director of OMB, we can authorize a prepayment. So say you're an organization that doesn't have, so you, so you have your budget and your program costs you $10,000 a month. I don't have a problem with advancing an organization $20,000, $30,000. So you have a quarter to, to do the, do your program. And then after you complete your first month, then start that process of reporting. So we can provide the funds to get that project moving. So it's not necessarily a total reimbursement where you have to have that money upfront. But I will tell you, there are other communities in Michigan that are doing a quarterly reimbursement. So the organizations have to have three months of funding upfront. Now we're, we don't necessarily have to do that. And I'm open to doing that advancement. That might come with additional monitoring, but I, I don't have a problem with that. So I think there are options that we have here to help organizations to get these projects moving.
Are we giving any money to the folks that had violated the grants or CDBG funds prior?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, we've had findings on ones that would be granted, but that's been resolved. The, the, the organization that had the night, that I referenced that had the 19 missed reports, we went back and did those reports for that organization. But I don't think that organization exists anymore. It was kind of a single subject. The contractors that we have had, where we've had the issues that I mentioned, we don't work with them anymore. I don't think they exist anymore. But that, that history leads to the need, I think, to, to help safeguard a lot of these funds. But with the idea that we're definitely open to working to organizations. So, you know, I'm, I'm surprised to hear that some of the comments made. But it may be that it wasn't communicated as clearly as that with them. Does that make sense?
Councilwoman, now, councilwoman, silly.
Okay. Excuse me for laughing, but I've got a few questions, so I guess it's two. I'm gonna do two.
Two, then I'll come back to you.
Okay. And I don't know if this, I'm gonna just make this not a question, but a comment. I'm wondering why David from Guide House or Guide House Period is not here tonight?
So I, I can take that as a question to answer it. Because he asked if we needed him here, but not one council member asked me if he could be here. And I did forward all council, all of the questions from the subrecipient risk assessment two weeks ago. And not, I received not one question from any council member, nor did one council member ask to have Guide House here.
Okay. I must have missed that memo. But this is a statement and then I'll just leave it as two questions. Okay, but let me just say this one, that's my part, my number two. Is study being mentioned about what happened with city some years ago? And I won't say misappropriation of funds, but some oversight and issues. To bring that, and that's CDBG, and I got the memo today, I read it. I don't see how that, ARPA funds and CDBG funds are definitely not the same, should not be handled the same, in my opinion. This is just my opinion. And my one question would be for now, is why city council members were not privy to or invited to these meetings that just took place the past couple of weeks? I've talked to some of the recipients and I'm not happy and/or pleased with what went on in some of those meetings. But I, I, I would have to say that had I been there or council members had been there, I could say with a fact what was said, and I can't do that right now. But I'm wondering, we need to have a conversation. We, we need to have conversation regarding this because in my opinion, Guide House is lacking on some of the duties that we gave them $850,000 to do. And saying, let's save some money just in case they need it for monitoring of different organizations. They were already paid for that. We shouldn't even be considering giving them another dime. I'm not happy. That's all, that's all I have to say. That wasn't even a question, except for why the city council members were not invited into these meetings that were with supposedly recipients of ARPA dollars. Somebody, in my opinion, some of us should have been in there or invited to be in there. That is a question.
So if, first of all, that those meetings were administrative function, but if we did invite council, it would, it would be a council meeting?
No, not the way we usually do it, where it's three or less or four or less. And if they, if, if your administrative staff mentions council, we should have been there.
I, I am not sure.
We'll deal with that later. Thank you.
That's back to.
It's a couple.
All right. My, and I appreciate, thank you for sharing. One of the things that I want to go, what you explained with the reimbursement, that is helping me understand more. Because what I hear reimbursement is, so I do reimbursement in my office and it's, you pay it, you show me you paid it, and then we reimburse you. So thank you for that clarification. My question is with this questionnaire and how we do have the autonomy to do the upfront cost. Is that questionnaire used in determining how we, who would be able to, who will do upfront costs? Or is that used? And if it is used, is there a rubric or scoring for that questionnaire that as council, we, because I have the questionnaire, I just don't have like a rubric for, to let me know, to say this question is, you know... like a rubric for to let me know, to say, this question is, you know, weighed this much when we look at the impact of the businesses?
Yeah, there's a rubric we can give you. So, going back to your first part, the questions would not necessarily impact if you had that kind of advance, but it will impact the amount of monitoring. So, if you didn't have a lot of experience, had a number of audit findings, had other issues, then your monitoring level is going to increase no matter what. And then if you get an advance, it may be increased more than on the reimbursement basis.
Did I ask two questions? But then, my second question would just be, with that, and thank you for that clarification, with this, because my thing that I'm getting, I'm processing things, because I want to make sure I'm processing this through an equitable lens, and knowing that we have different organizations with different experiences, and, you know, and so clarifying that is, the questionnaire is really a management, how we manage the funds that we provide. I've seen other communities that clearly laybells out in words in a public format. Would we ever get to a place where that is publicly, and I know we're doing the meetings, and maybe it will come after the meetings we have with each of the organizations, but will there ever come a point where publicly we will be able to go to a site and see, these are criteria? This is exactly, when it comes down to how we're managing and allocating the money, and is there a max, you know, of how much we will sign off, like is it $100,000 or $50,000 based on the questionnaire? Would that ever come about?
Yeah, I think so. I think that is, as you stated, after the assessment process, you would get to that point where you're doing that. And it is dependent upon what program it is. So, if you're saying, well, this program costs X dollars a month, then if it's $10,000 a month, do you need $100,000, you know, upfront? Or what are the needs there? So, or do you have, we'll handle capital needs different. So, capital needs are pretty easy to monitor and put out. So, there's different expenditures that would be based on these questions and review, and then you'll have an agreement, a sub-recipient grant agreement too, that would outline those items.
Well, thank you. I guess we're not okay, so I'm gonna have to cut my question short. You say it's easier to monitor capital as opposed to program. Easier for who? Because isn't this one of, correct me if I'm wrong, y'all say that, and y'all forgive me, because I'm very passionate, and I don't mean to be, that's just my demeanor, so don't take that. Easier for who? Isn't that Guide House, is that, who's, excuse me, because I guess it's not even coming out right. Isn't that one of their jobs? What is it easier for? We gave them 850,000.
Let me go back. We did not give them 850,000.
Okay, we allocated.
Allocated, and then they bill based on hours.
Don't play words. Allocated $850,000 for Guide House. This is part of their job, from what I read, and from February 7th of 22, and consent agenda, and it stated what their job duties were, going to be to us. And so, and if you all remember, some of you, I was excited about the presentation, and I said, oh, we need you. But I don't need them if they're not going to complete what they said in black and white. Do what you told me you were going to do, or maybe it's time to do some adjusting. It is other agencies, even within our city, that can monitor these dollars, these program dollars. I don't want people to think, just like something is getting ready to come up, in regards to programming versus capital, tonight. It never was said, well, you know, it'll be better for you all to do capital as opposed to programming, because that's going to be better for us.
Mayor, is, I don't know what the question is.
Okay, the question is, is Guide House, I guess, I said, is Guide House going to do their job? Do we need to look at somebody else to do the?
Yes, they will do the monitoring.
Oh.
But the mon-
But not the actual.
Well, it would be, so, the monitoring is, in the way, why I'm saying, it's, you know, quote unquote, easier for capital is because it's a one-time expenditure.
Of course.
So, if an organization is getting a roof, they will get with us and say, okay, roof, here's our contractor, here's the cost, we need half of it upfront.
You explain that.
You do that, and then we report that. If it's a programming, that's going to be several hours of monitoring because of the way we have to report it to Treasury. So, that's where the difference is.
But isn't that all right, though?
That's fine. It just impacts the amount of time there is in the process.
Okay. We were looking forward to that. We knew that. Right. Okay.
No, I thought that we were trying to utilize them to get what we wanted, and then pull out before the $850,000 was spent. And now we're looking at occurring another price, because they never said that they were going to monitor no program.
Okay, we did good. I'm gonna have to read.
Ever in the contract. I mean, me and you could talk about it.
But we need to talk about it in front of everybody.
I don't have a problem with that.
Because that's not what I read. We said no more than $850,000.
Right. No more than $850,000 for what they, for what we were hiring them for. And we did not ask, we did not tell them about programming. We did not tell them about programming and doing them studies. Yes.
David from Guide House, probably a month or so ago, explained to, I think, a group of us gathered in council chambers before we came out, that their contract that we gave, you know, gave them up to $850,000 was to be treated like a menu. Just because you go out to eat, you've got a four-page menu, you don't buy every entree on the menu, you don't necessarily buy dessert, maybe you just get appetizers. And they would bill us in accordance to what we selected off of the menu of services that they provided. So, they may have said to us that they provide those services of monitoring, but we didn't necessarily allocate money for them to do the monitoring. We allocated money up to a point for them to get us through the committee process and the allocation process. And then additional costs arose, because what we did in the allocation process meant that we were going to need them for longer. So, I think the menu, I mean, obviously, they can provide a whole host of services, but you don't have to utilize every one of them. And I too was under the impression that we were trying to, you know, end their contract before we utilized the full $850,000. And I just have to go on the record. I have said over and over again, we had meetings here in city council chambers with the applicants or potential applicants. I know I for a fact, I've heard the mayor say it a million times, capital is easier to track, you don't have to spend as much money to administer it if you do capital. And the county did not do any programming spending, because they couldn't track it. They're using the same people, and I think we're running into that problem of why they said they weren't able to do it and track it. We're dealing with, you know, that other side of it, because we chose to go down, you know, the programming path. So, that's all I wanted to add.
I just have a question.
Yes.
I just have a question, because I'm new, and I just want to understand, I guess, as far as a communication piece, how is it getting out to public knowledge, since I'm new, like I've seen a lot of it on social media, and I don't believe everything I read. But I guess, how are they to be informed to know? I mean, the people that didn't even get the grants, just in general, how are they getting it communicated to them?
Notified. I believe that all of the applications, so we took the file from all of the applicants and sent them, I believe it was an email, is that right, Yolanda, stating that this is, these are the allocations that were made. So, everyone received the same email if they provided an accurate contact email or address. And some did not. So, there could be some that didn't apply, but some didn't conclude the comment in the portal or contact in the portal. But everyone received the same email, which stated that these are the ones that council funded.
Okay. I was just wondering, because it just seemed like a lot of confusion when people were speaking up here. I just want to be, but understand everything, like what's going on. Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Copeland.
I'm thankful for the spirited conversation going on as council members. The one thing that, what I'm, in my mind, having the conversation with our staff, hearing the work that it will put on them, but then also hearing the community. And again, over a year and a half, it seems like finally we're getting concrete answers. Because it's the truth, I've heard the, I heard the capital expenses, but I also heard different stories from different events that I went to in the community. And one of my challenges that I felt as a city is, when you allow others to share the narrative and we're not in front of it, that's where the communication gets mixed up. And that's, it goes to my question earlier of, when will we, as a city, put clear definitions, clear guidelines, what monitoring is, defining that, what the reimbursement is, defining that not just in these meetings, but publicly, so we can make sure on our end that what we're doing is equitable, that we are following standards, and that even if you, you know, we still have people coming to us because we shared we have additional money, are we even accepting, still accepting proposals? Because a public speaker today said they sent, they just recently sent in a proposal. So, where do we have clear definitions? And correct me if I'm wrong, he said that he submitted one for the-
Yeah, one in the portal.
Okay, thank you. And so, and, but I've also had been contacted by others, community citizens, who said, hey, someone contacted me to submit a proposal. But I need, I want to make sure, and I'm not, and I don't like using, I will stay behind closed doors, who it was and what it was. I want to do that right now. But it's a reality, and we still have citizens coming to us saying this. This is not coming out of thin air. So, at some point as a city, I asked city manager, that I know our staff is working hard, but if we could possibly have some clear definitions, because we're going to constantly pull up all of these forms, all this information from other cities. But until we say, as the City of Saginaw, this is what we're doing and how we're doing it, I appreciate your clarification on why we have those standards in the community for the City of Saginaw because of past experiences. But if we wouldn't have had that right now, we would have still had more conversations.
Yeah. So, we are, we are accepting applications any longer, so I don't know where that came from. The only time that the applications or ideas came into the city that were formal was in the portal that went to the ARPA committee. Now, we were receiving steadily letters even prior to that, because of the fact that, you know, staff and council were still working through that process. But I think, and I would send it back to council, I think you guys are, have received all the applications that you want to receive at this point, because you're at 400 plus, right? So, if there, what I, my understanding is that if there is additional money in some point, you would go back to those applicants that have already applied, right? That's, I think that's the assumption that we're working under. So, if it's coming from anywhere other than the city, then it's, we're not asking for applications.
And that's my point. I need something that I can direct someone and say, this is what the City of Saginaw says, rather than having constant conversation. I can direct, just like the City of Flint, I can direct them to their ARPA page, where it gives them updates, how the money is being expended, what their balances are, what their, I can go directly there and show them that. But right now, I, and I know, I don't want to put more work on our city staff, but just something simple.
We do have an ARPA page.
No, no, we do.
And I think we'll work through updating that with some of these.
That's all I'm asking. The things that we heard tonight, reimbursement, monitoring, putting that clearly out there, how we, what that really looks like.
But it is, so, a lot of the, so, monitoring and any type of advancement is going to be on a case-by-case basis. So, it's, your monitoring level may be different than another one, so you can't just say, this is X, this is exactly what we're doing. But every organization will know what that is after we work through this process.
And just make sure, if that's equitably out there, like, so, that's my only thing, just making sure all of that. I understand how we do it, why we do it. You explain that to me this evening. But if possible, and if I'm missing it, please direct me to the link, but just having that clearly out there on our ARPA pages.
Yep. And that is one of the requirements from Treasury, is that they are common factors. And they have, I tell you, that Guide House and the staff had other meetings, we've had them every Friday since the 9th, and other organizations, some organizations are right on with what we're doing, they don't have any issue. So, it, you know, it just depends.
And please don't take it as I'm saying we're cheating money, we're, the only thing I'm just saying is communication, like putting it out there online.
Yes.
Okay. I think this may be my last. Just in my opinion, and as a grant writer for many years, it seemed like the process kind of went a little backwards, but that's just my opinion. But are some of the recipients, are they not getting, is it something saying that they're not getting, is this an award amount or something? Let's just say, for instance, I'm giving the City of Saginaw a million dollars, or the council, that was a resolution for the council to give the city a million. Is that saying they're getting a million or no? Is this something else that I'm missing? And that's only from conversation. And I will concur with Councilwoman Copeland. I've had so many people tell me that they were told that they could yet send in proposals. And I'm like, you know, that's just hearsay. I've had several different people. But I want to know about, if we said this is a million, and council agreed to, you know, we want to give you a million dollars, is that, is that going forward, they're getting a million dollars? Or is anything changing after these meetings with city staff and Guide House?
Well, I think part of the review process is to make sure all of the expenditures that are being put forward are eligible under ARPA.
Okay. So, will we, this is my second question, would we be getting a report back saying that the City of Saginaw, even though you awarded them one million, after review of, we can only see, were they eligible for ARPA for $700,000? Will we be getting that?
Yep, you'll get that back after this process, and then you'll have to determine, you know, what are the next steps.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Guide House has given us additional considerations on a presentation from August 29, 2022, about costs related to distributing payments of the funds and managing new grant programs established under SLF RF. And then the compliance report came out about three weeks later. Was there ever a conversation about making these as loan payments or as beneficiaries to reduce the responsibility of the city, or to not get pulled into the menu of monitoring these?
I think that will be based upon the specific project. I mean, if it's-
Was there a previous conversation about?
I don't recall if we talked about that or not, but I think that's part of the discussion now, is what type of agreement do you have with each organization? But definitely, I think you are, you're going to want to have the monitoring.
And that's with the matrix that they've given to us, with the questions that we were talking about when Councilwoman Copeland brought that up. One of the questions was if, how do we consider applicants through their history? And I think that that question was aimed at possibly- And I think that that question was aimed at possibly making sure that people that had violated the system prior weren't getting new funds. Because I want to I'll ask a question in a second. But for people that had approached the city to do good work that the city couldn't do and then to be told that we can't trust, but we can verify, it just doesn't come off right. And that needs to be taken into consideration for them to burden other people's mistakes to the point where this isn't actually promoting equitable outcomes. But it's just monitoring those that are stepping up to help us post COVID. I can't get with it just because there's so many different avenues to go down. So I'm requesting that David comes at the next meeting. I've already done the information request of the monthly invoices that he's been supposed to be giving the city and the the contract. So please give that to me whenever you're available to. And I'll give you all the information that I was able to give. But even in their own funding recommendations, they talk about people that have been historically disenfranchised and they promoted equity, and this is this is not.
Right, so I'm not saying, and I don't think I haven't been in the meetings, but I don't think that the indication is that anyone isn't going to be funded because of their history or because of the city's history. And the monitoring level is attributable to that organization's history, not history we've had with other grantees.
But you could see where the there are different avenues to be able to grant these individuals programming dollars. And the avenue that we decided to go down was overly cautious, in my opinion.
I don't agree.
And then I'll get you the the project and expenditure report because it says that for enumerated eligible uses other than certain capital expenditures, recipients are not required to provide substantial documents. I'll get that over to you.
I will, you know, just general update for council. We've been the city, even through subgrantees, were required to report quarterly to the Treasury. And even with the limited expenditures that we've had, that is hours and hours and hours of reporting for staff. So as we push money out, that's going to be additional reporting out, which we do need that monitoring to bring that back into the reporting system. So that that's that's part of the requirements.
And it's not just the reporting of the NPOs, correct? It's for all allocated funds?
Everything we do, we have to report. Even when we had only done the I can't remember what some of the first allocations council did, maybe hazard pay.
Blight, yeah, hazard pay and blight.
That was, I can't remember because I don't do the reports, but I think it was multiple pages of reporting for just that one item. So as we push this out, it's it's going to take time. It's going to help us to have those documents available from the organizations when we do that reporting.
That's what I was considering because the idea that it's just the NPOs that are causing us to possibly extend or add to the contract for Guide House is not totally correct because we have all reporting obligations.
Right, we have been doing our own reporting for the city's expenditures, not not Guide House.
Counsel, I'm just do.
I'm yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Counsel, you said one more question and now you got enough.
It just came up.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you so much, Mayor. You're so wonderful. But, you know, I keep hearing something and echoing here about the staff, and I definitely appreciate the city staff, but I also appreciate the city council. Because when I was elected to city council, we didn't know we were going to have ARPA funds, just like the city didn't know we were going to have ARPA funds. So we all ended up doing a lot more work than we probably, well, I'm gonna say me, probably thought I would be doing. I've spent numerous hours dealing with the ARPA information and going through different things and trying to read up on different things. So myself as a city council person, I went on and I took that I took that job. So I understand the city, but I understand that I think that it should be understood that we're all in a process of dealing with ARPA funds and we're all doing extra work. It's not just the city staff. City council, I know I have done extra work. I know I have stayed up late, late, late at night reading final rules and going through ARPA and back and forth and calling council members and what about this and what about that? So I think we all have put in a lot of extra work that we didn't plan on doing. And that's just a statement. It wasn't a question. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Hearing the, thank you, city manager, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are at the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city webpage and on SGTV, channel 191. I need a motion to adopt the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Do we have any exceptions?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yes.
Okay, number three.
Yes.
Number seven.
Oh, you had more than one, I'm sorry.
Number three, number seven, number eight. And that's it.
Three, seven, and eight.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Three and four.
Are there any more?
I have one seventeen.
Are there any more? Hearing any not anymore. There's a motion that's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Item number three, approve the selling of the former Jefferson Apartments located at 505 Mallard Street through the standard process. This was council members Sylvia and Oostash.
Okay, what I wanted to know in regards to that, I guess is more or less information. Because is this the normal process that we have to approve the selling of? Because I know some other times we were asked to approve the bidding process and not so much as the selling of the entity or the building or the.
Right, so in the past, a lot of these have been done through development agreements, you recall? In this case, we have more than one entity expressed interest in this building. So that's why we're asking council to allow us to do this process.
Okay, because I know I'll just say most recently would be the Civitan.
It's the same process, yes.
So we were asked to approve the selling of it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, can you give me that information, please, later? Thank you very much.
That's the agenda.
Beg your pardon?
I believe it was the last agenda.
No, I remember saying that we were we approved to bid on it, but I don't remember, and I could be wrong.
I probably just worded it different. My apology. It is still going through the bidding process.
No, no, I'm talking about we approving the selling of it and then the bidding. Yeah, so we want to be kind of put that together, right?
It's still the same process. We're going through the bidding process to sell the building.
Okay, we want to make sure it looks the same on both ends. So it won't be questions from one person to another, well, why would you do this? And that's the reason I asked that question. Thank you very much.
Yes. You done?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, thank you. So in the council communication, it states that we've already done some various remediation and site prep activities. You know what those were to prepare for this?
These were done back when the city acquired the property in 2011. I'm not sure if you've been in it recently. It's all stripped down to the studs, essentially.
Yep, yep, I'm totally aware. So you're taught, yes, under the TARP funding through the NS neighborhood stabilization program that was. Okay, so thanks for that clarification. Since the property has not been identified as a strategic partial within the city's revitalization and development plan in your communication, even though our master plan is talking about urban living and that we need the need for housing. So I was just kind of wondering.
So that statement just means that the city isn't planning to use it as a municipal building.
Gotcha.
So we want it for economic development, real estate development properties, but not for the city to develop ourselves.
Okay, and Cassie, the reason why I'm asking some of these questions because I know some of the neighbors are in the audience tonight. And it's always been I live in that neighborhood, so there's always been a lot of concern as to what is actually going to happen with that building. The building, over the time, had all new windows and things that were put in there. And thank God that we've mothballed the roof properly because that is how you keep a building viable by not letting water get inside. Are we looking at any sort of grant programs right now through some of the recent activity we've had? Let me talk about certified local government. I know you're working on some micro grants. Or are we just going to put it out there in its current condition? Or would we try to mitigate some of the burden of the developer by taking some of those costs off, I guess?
The plan at this moment is to sell the building as is. We do have certain incentives that the city runs through. We have property tax abatements and some other things that we would be open to hearing from those developers. Actually, part of the bid process, we've developed some different questions to learn about their qualifications and their background, and part of that is their financial wherewithal to do the project and what incentives they envision to make the project happen.
Okay, with that, I would just highly encourage the city manager and his staff to be very cognizant of what we are looking to do with that building because I know there's been some expression of what it could be, what they don't want to see there. I think apartments would be fine or condos. And then we would talk about more of that as it comes. Because the development agreement eventually will come to city council, correct?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily?
Because of the we're because we're going through this process. And just to confirm your earlier question, I did just pull up the last agenda. It is the exact same wording that we used for the Civitan. It was selling the property through the bid process. And so we we're looking for them not only to submit a purchase price through the bid process, but also their development counts for the property. And so it'll go to the best, highest bidder for both of these properties. But it's because we are releasing full ownership of it through a sale rather than through.
So how is that different than the Arcade Building?
Mayor, Mayor, for these kind of questions, the motion or the item is about setting it for bids, selling it with the bid process. To continue any other discussion, you need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve number three.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
We just got a second.
Now we can discuss it, or now we have to vote?
You need to have discussion now, yes.
Okay.
But we're getting off the topic of what the approval was going to be for.
Yeah, Clerk Santos, thanks for that.
You're welcome.
So how does that any different than the Arcade Building or that we sold to a developer? I mean, there was a development agreement that went along with that. We fixed the building. It was ours. Sold it for a dollar. And then there was a five-year development agreement on that too, which I've actually looked into that a little bit recently too.
So development agreements, I'm not I need to review that development agreement or specifics on that one.
Okay, I want to just my question is, how is it any different? There's there's some properties. I'm getting confused, so I need clarification.
The good thing now because we have more parties interested in our buildings. So previously, we did a lot of development agreements because we didn't want to hold property and we were glad someone was at least someone was interested in doing something with it. But now we're getting approached specifically for buildings that the city owns. We're getting approached by multiple groups to purchase or do a development agreement. So we need a process where we can evaluate those. This is the first step is asking council to approve this sale through the bid process.
Okay, thank you, because my only concern is that we would sell it and then nothing would happen again. So that's why I was asking for that agreement.
Yeah, we don't we want to make sure that there, you know, there's there's risks to the various things. The benefit to having the development agreement is that we have a clawback options.
Okay.
If the project's not done.
Thank you.
But we're not getting fair market value.
Right. So you're if you if you go through a sale process and it doesn't get developed, then you have you may not have the ability to bring that property back.
Yeah, because we really don't want it to end up in the land bank because we know how that goes.
But if somebody buys it, it won't end up in the land bank.
Exactly.
We'll be able to go and put it together.
And that's part of, you know, what we want to evaluate in this is to make sure that it's a developer that is going to develop the property. That's why I want to look at development history, projects you've done in the city. What are your plans for the building? I know Cassie's working on those items to include.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, one.
Okay, so am I hearing correctly that we're selling it, which is a good thing? But the person and or entity that purchased a property from the city can have the wherewithal to do almost what they want to do with that particular site or?
We want the developer to have the experience that they would be able to complete a project the size of 505 Mallard for the Jefferson Apartments, of course, and to have some kind of understanding of what their general timeline is, who they're back, like what they're going to be able to fund the project with.
So it's more than just the lowest, I mean, the highest bidder?
Right.
Yes.
Right, and and as as Councilman Oostash mentioned, we want to know what you're going to do with the building too.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
And the bid, the request for bids is public knowledge. It will be posted on the city's website. If you guys are interested, I'm sure we can forward that out to all of you as well.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Motion to approve consent agenda number four.
Spin my number three.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Consent agenda number three.
We have already done it, so now I'm calling for the vote.
Any more discussion?
Okay.
Any more discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Item number four, approve the agreement with Spicer Group Incorporated for the use of a portion of the city-owned parking lot at 220 Baum Street. Councilmember Oostash.
Yeah, on this particular consent agenda item, this again has been submitted by Cassie Zimmerman from our Economic Development Department. How did we determine the price of a dollar a day per slip?
You all approved parking rates for that parking lot in December, second meeting in December. It's $1 per hour, $6 for a day, $30 for a month.
$40 for a month?
$30 for a month.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So they're paying the $30 monthly fee for 54 parking spaces. In addition to that, they will be taxed on that portion of the property that they will be billed annually for, well, biannually with the December and July taxes.
Right. Okay, well, that answered that question. It just seems like a lot to take out half the parking lot for a business when in the past I've had conversations with the manager where there were other interests of people to be using it as well. Do you know if there's still that interest?
Well, we so I had that concern as well. So this is something that we will review. And prior to setting up this agreement with Spicer, the other entities in the area were contacted, SBRC, the Jacobson's Development and other surrounding businesses. So we feel with this amount, we'll be able to accommodate those needs now. But you probably are aware, you've seen activity around the Jacobson's building. As that project, complaints, we'll have to come and revisit that, and Spicer is aware of that. We've notified them. They own a lot there too. So I don't think we'll have an issue with that in the long term. So this at this point, it allows us to bring in this revenue. It costs money to do the upkeep and plow. And you know, we spent, I think, a million dollars to do this in the first place with the demo and the construction. So this will allow us to recoup some of that for the time being.
And it's only a six-month agreement.
Right, yeah.
That is why we did the shorter so that we could reevaluate after the summer when we assume that the parking lot will be in higher demand.
All right, then, motion to approve consent agenda number four.
It's been moved to second. Any more discussion?
Just a real quick comment. Just a real quick comment. Tim, you still know how I feel on this. I just think that we could have really did something different here, but I'm going to leave it at that. So call for the vote.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Item number seven, approve the purchase with CollinsFlags.com for $2,637, and pending budget approval for $3,047 for fiscal year 2024, and $3,234 for fiscal year 2025 for United States Flag Grave Markers for the Public Service Department Cemetery's Division. Councilmember Sylvia.
It's not a real big question. I just wanted to know what you do with the flags, the previous flags, that's all.
Yeah, so, I mean, so there's a federal rule or law out there that because we own the cemetery requires us to provide these flags to be installed at veterans' section grave sites. And fortunately, we worked with the local VFW and other people to place them, but they're just, they're not very expensive flags, so, I mean, by the time they sit out in the weather for four to six, seven weeks picking them up, there's really not much left of them. We try to salvage some of them that we can from year to year and reset those, because we put them out at Memorial Day and Fourth of July holiday, so. But they're just kind of the ones you might be able to go get, and you're like, a buck each, or they're not, so they're not really high quality, so they don't last very long.
That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Oh, motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Item number eight, approve the purchase with Detroit Salt Company for $109,902 for seasonal road salt for the Public Service Department Streets Division. Councilmember Sylvia.
Okay. My question was, because as I was reading the information, you said we had like 2,000 tons left? And I guess I was just asking, is this enough? Are you asking for enough money for this to...
Yeah, so, so what happens is, once a year, we have the ability to place an order through the state. We work the state of Michigan's saw order, and we get a better price that way. And we have to put in what is called a pre-order and a backup order. So in the next couple of months, hopefully by then, we'll be through most of the snow events. And this was 2,000 up to that last snow event, so we're probably down to 1,500 maybe. And we put that order in, we have the right to either decrease it by 20% or increase it by 30. Our order for, was only for 1,500 tons for our late saw, and we're actually increasing the 30% we're allowed, so that's why we're getting the 1,900. But once we put that in there, and hopefully through the next month, say that gives us, you know, 3,000 or 3,200 ton, we know if, if that's how we end the winter, we'll put an 800-ton order in for the early saw, which we get September, October. We get this saw twice a year. We'll get one in September, October, in case between the time we got the backup and then we had another couple of snow events, we have an opportunity to refill the barn. And then we kind of put a best guess estimate, hoping, depending on what kind of snow events we're going to have, so what that, the backup saw order will be. So that's kind of, I mean, fortunately, it's worked out for us, but yeah, we will be okay.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Motion to approve. Second.
It's been moved to second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Item number seven, approve the water and sewer rate increases for the Water and Sewer Department's Water and Wastewater Treatment Division. Councilmember Flores.
Thank you, Clerk. It was 17?
Correct.
Thank you. I just motioned to postpone until the next council meeting. Oh, I motioned to postpone until the next council meeting. I motioned to postpone this agenda item.
It's a motion on the floor.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Can I get to that point, please?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Is there any discussion? Yes.
No, go ahead. Lady Hill, answer my question.
Yes.
Thank you. Now that the public's been able to see the presentation, or will be able to see the presentation, I would just hope or recommend that we postpone this vote until they have the ability to come up and tell us how good of an idea it is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, counsel. Counsel, one.
I guess my comment would be, I'm going to vote in favor of this, because two, three weeks ago, city staff was here and present, and I apologize, because I had signed up to come to one of the sessions where we were going to receive this presentation. I couldn't make it, so they were nice enough to do this all online. Myself and Councilman Copeland got to attend it. Council's been given this information and can start talking about it. I think they made it pretty clear in their presentation that the integrity of our water with, I think I wrote it down, $140 million worth of capital projects that we need to fund between now and the next six years on both sides, water and sewer. That's astronomical, and it's absolutely irresponsible, after we were provided with that kind of information, not to move forward. It's on us to talk to our constituents about it. It's on us to lead and make sure that they understand why we have to make these decisions. I just, I have no problem voting on this tonight, and I think that we, you know, need to be very wise when it comes to supporting the motions that particularly our water department makes to us.
Councilman Copeland.
And for me, that's kind of just a clarification, is if it's going to change the vote, because this team has laid out the need for the city of Saginaw. It's not, it's not going to change. They've been going over this for over a year and a half to provide us with the information. I asked the community to still come out and share how they're feeling and express it, but I don't think anything is going to change, because as my responsibility as a council member to hear the impact of these projects that it's going to have on our residents, I'm willing to have more of the personal one-on-one conversations to explain this, because that's why I wanted to make sure to attend that meeting and have this handout. But where we are as a city, we're operating over a 15-year rate as well as 40 million that, it's not going, we have to have these upgrades. And it's our duty to make sure that we vote for. I don't think a vote is going to change. I still understand why you're doing it, because to have the community come out, I still want the community to come out. But the land, it won't change anything, because the need for the city of Saginaw right now is we, this is something we need to do.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm not proposing that we change it. I'm proposing that we get additional public engagement. The span of it is, as Mayor Protem Bench said, six years. So just knowing the way that our city functions, we'll get a news report tomorrow that people will read stating that their rates went up, and then they will come back and ask why they weren't told about it, for those that aren't fully engaged, as some of us here on council. And we just had a conversation about how there needs to be clarification on other, with other avenues. So this does not, I'm not proposing that we change or delay this for a year or for half a decade. It's for two weeks. So that's all I have.
Yes, Councilman.
If possible, Manager Morales, I believe that is on the city of Saginaw to make sure that we get all the information out within these next two weeks. If we are prepared, we know that this is going to happen. We know whenever you're talking about an increase, and this is where I shared earlier, where we have to be proactive in saying ahead of something. And I think what Paul and the team has provided, I hope we can get that out, which I understand everything that you're saying. We're going, it's going to happen. They're going, the public is going to come up. But it's still going, it's still going to be voted yes. It's still going to, because we need this. So I would ask Manager Morales, if possible, and his team, if we can get something ready for the next two weeks, video, YouTube videos, some type of marketing, Paul, put him on the camera. He has a great camera ready face, you know, to put it, to put it out, to put it out there that this is what is happening. And this is, we want to make sure our community is well aware of why we're doing it, what it's going to look like. And as always, our council room is always open for community input.
I was thinking already that Matt can cut the presentations into individual videos that we could share outside of the meeting. We already have them recorded since we have the system, and I think part of what you're saying is the reason why the mayor requested that two-sheeter and why they recommended to develop it. Those kind of infographics, I think, really tell the story the best, but I think you're right on with the, with the need that's here. I think we need to get planning as soon as we can. Some of these items, particularly in wastewater, are way overdue.
Right.
The item that Paul presented, the second, the river crossing, that is something that we probably should have done years ago, and one failure, and you're not processing wastewater for one whole side of the city. So I think, definitely, we can put out more information, and we'll cut those videos, and we can send them to you all. We can give you more of the, make sure you have all of the presentation PDFs that you can share, and we'll push everything out. Yep.
And then let me, let me clarify something, or let me ask the question. This rate change is not happening till July, July 1. So again, we as council people have time to give out the right information. The problem is, is that some of us are on a different track than others. We all got to be on the same track, because we all need to be saying the same thing. That's why I asked for this sheet, and that's why I kept saying, how much? How much? If you tell me how much something is, I can budget for it. But if you wait till a month before, uh-uh, uh-uh, because now I'm mad. So this sheet, I think, is going to help along with the videos. Because we're not, I mean, if we have to do town halls, we can probably do that too, something to communicate. Yes.
Just, we will get the PDF in our email?
Yeah, you said that.
Yeah, that's, okay, I missed it. I missed it, because I'll print them off at home. I'll take them to... Yep.
Oh, my God. Any more questions? Yes. Yes, Counselwoman Sylvia.
Thank you, Mayor.
Definitely, we need it. Definitely. I'm going to vote yes.
We need what?
Anywho, I understand Councilman Flores, when he says that the citizens of Saginaw, even though we all say, most, not all, we mostly concur, that it's going to definitely be yes, because we need it. But we won't, don't want to negate the fact that we want to hear from any of our citizens that want to chime in on this. So I don't want to do anything without talking to the citizens of the city of Saginaw, even though this is something we need, we've met, we've gone over it, we had great presenters, they presented to us previous. But we got to be really, I'm going to be real careful when I say that I'm going to do a particular thing without letting the citizens of Saginaw know and being able to chime in if they want to. I know we're going to have the videos and everything, that's great, but I just think we need to be careful in what we say and how we say it, as it relates to the citizens of Saginaw and any interested parties. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Calling for the vote.
I have a motion to postpone.
Pardon me?
Clarify that, I have a motion to postpone.
What are you saying?
I have a motion to postpone. I'm just clarifying.
Madam Clerk, can you read the motion?
The vote would be...
I was going to ask for it, reread the motion.
To postpone until the next meeting, the approval of the water sewer rates increases for the Water and Sewer Department's Water and Wastewater Treatment Division.
Okay. You young people have heard the motion. It's been moved to second. We calling for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Nay.
Roll call vote, Mayor.
Roll call vote, Mayor. Madam Clerk.
Oops, Councilmember Balls was absent. Mayor Protem Bench?
No.
Councilmember Ostaash?
Nay.
Councilmember Garcia?
Nay.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Councilmember Copeland?
Nay.
Councilmember Sylvia?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Nay.
We have two yes and five nay, so your motion is denied.
Motion to accept, number 17. Item 17.
Second.
I didn't hear.
He motioned to accept, 17.
Okay. It's been moved to second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are at Board, Commission, and Committee Reports.
I need a motion to approve the four, one through four appointments, leave allowing room for exception.
Reports first, Mayor.
Reports.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have any board reports? Boards are commission reports. We hardly ever get them, so I'm sorry. Madam Clerk.
That takes us to Appointment of Board and Commission Committee Members.
I need a motion to approve one through four, leaving room for exception.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
We are now at resolutions. Our first one tonight is to authorize the resubmission of the MDOT Transportation Alternative Program Grant for the Cass Street Reconstruction Project.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Our second resolution is to authorize the elimination of the at-grade railroad crossings at Mackinac Street and Meredith Street.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our final resolution tonight is approve the cost agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation for the reconstruction of Mackinac Street from Congress Avenue to Alexander Street.
I need a motion to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at miscellaneous business.
Do we have any motions that we'd like to put on the floor? Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution to modify the spending plan for the Boys and Girls Clubs art allocation, as outlined in the resolution on the table before us, provided by city staff, and this would change it from the programming allocation that we gave to capital dollars at their request. They provided us with an email earlier today that should be in our inbox, further detailing what.
There's a motion on the floor.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? Yes.
Yes. This is the other reason that I'm requesting Guy House, because they sent the information in regards to this. At our committee, with Councilman Williams, myself, and Councilman Garcia, I don't know if she was privy to this particular, I think she may have. It was a reason we did this. I don't know why this didn't come back to the committee. It's a reason we did this and was not going to give them capital dollars. It's a reason we did this and was not going to give them capital dollars. So I don't know if this is how we doing things without coming back to the committee. I think David could have called us and asked us about this. He was in the meeting with us and knew that this is something we did not want to do.
Well, I.
If they can't use the money for what we allocated that money for, then that money needs to go back and be redistributed because it's reasons that we did not want to give them capital dollars. And we wanted the money specifically for this particular Boys and Girls Club at Stone School. And we were never privy to any information that they didn't have the wherewithal to spend these dollars. So to me, it's kind of like, it just don't feel right. It seemed like it should have come back to that.
Okay. Mr. Manager, do you want to respond to that?
Uh.
Or somebody?
Well, I think we did want to just, I think the idea was to bring it back to full council because definitely the subcommittees made the recommendations for those groups, but all of council made the approval for the allocations. So council can modify those. It's my understanding, and again, I wasn't, I wasn't in the meeting, these one-on-one meetings with the organizations, but it's my understanding that the, their ability to provide that programming at Stone School has changed. I think that's what it stated in the email due to certain circumstances beyond their control. So they will have more youth coming to their location on Fordney, which is why they want to do capital.
Let me do this right quick. Council Copeland, you wanted clarification, what we're talking about. This email was addressed to us from Boys and Girls Club. You got a communication earlier. They don't want program dollars, they want capital dollars. And they are requesting the change. So instead of program and capital or however it was stated, they're asking, they're asking us to give them this.
My clarification was from Councilwoman Sylvia and she's saying the issue is that there's reasons why they were not giving them money for capital and it should have, before it came back to, it should have went back to that committee?
Right. That's what her question was.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and not only that, how is Guide House? I don't even really understand it. How are they recommending to us who should be getting money? And I thought that was not what they were going to do. But I see they recommend in certain areas. And then you also had the city staff recommend this with Guide House, but nobody came to the subcommittee to ask us anything. Not anything. I read this today. This is the first time I heard of it was today.
Yes.
Yeah, just a comment, I guess it's a point of clarification from our city attorney is that we as a body have already approved it, so.
But we approved it for Stone School.
We have to, well, then we have to change it and that's what the manager said.
It was approved for programming. It didn't specify the type of programming in the resolution, I don't believe. And it's my understanding that the entity the money was allocated to is requesting this change.
That's what I thought.
And staff is presenting that request to the council, the recommendation. It's not coming from staff, it's coming from Boys and Girls Club.
Hold it up.
Thank you, Mayor. So if we were to do this, then they wouldn't have any programming money. In the emails, it just says that they.
They don't want it.
They want to help accommodate their teens to build onto their campus. So there would be no programming.
They have, they have other programming that they do ongoing at the Boys and Girls Club. So I think their thought is that they would benefit more from having this capital expense and additional programming money. I, this is, what? I don't think there's anyone here from the club. Is there? Oh, okay. If the, do we need a?
Motion to suspend the rules?
No. Go out of regular order of business. If you want, the representatives speak to you.
Yes. If council would like to hear from the representative, there is someone here. So you would make the motion that the clerk mentioned.
To go out of regular order of business.
Motion to go out of the regular order of business.
There's a motion on the floor.
Second.
You have a second?
Second.
It's been second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Can you please step to the podium?
Good evening, thank you. I'm Julie Valano, CEO of the Boys and Girls Club. What, what question?
What was the question?
I apologize. Why the change?
Why the change?
The change is, so at Stone School, we were, we had the elementary kids and we had the teens there. And after the pandemic, the school district does not allow us to let the teens come there any longer for some safety reasons. We also have our kids' campus building, which is on the other side by the YMCA. And so we are proposing, we have a lot of teens that we can't service because of this. And so we're proposing to use that capital money to make the addition onto kids' campus, which we've had a phase two there. We've also come across some transportation money to help get those kids over there. And we will continue with our programming. That's what we're all about. We have some programming dollars that we can use toward that. So, and we will make sure that we continue that way. But that was our resolution and the reasoning for asking for the switch from the programming to the capital.
Yes.
So you didn't, when you put in the proposal, which is during pandemic, so you said before that, so you were already aware?
No, I'm sorry. We put in post-pandemic, but we couldn't get into the schools for quite some time. And we started back and they let them in. And then some things happened with the teens and the school district said that they will no longer let them.
We need, I need to know.
Okay.
Unless it's something really, really private, I need to know because we made a decision to give you programming dollars for Stone School.
And we did put in for another, for a capital ask after this as well. So I, by no means am saying if I, we can use the programming dollars. This was just, this is a need and I've been trying to solve this problem for a year and a half. We have a lot of teens out there. And if it can't be approved, so be it.
Okay, my other part of that question would be, when you first initially asked for dollars from our, you did not ask for capital.
Correct. That is correct.
So this is come after you did your proposal and someone let you change your proposal from capital, I mean, from programming to capital.
They said that.
After you submitted it.
They said I could submit it.
No, I'm not saying that.
But I, I didn't.
But I'm just saying, I want that to be.
But they didn't do it, I did it.
Because that was after the fact.
I think this is what can come from those meetings. And going back to the discussion we had earlier, I don't know how long we talked about trying to help these organizations spend money and provide services to the public that are needed. But now when this comes up, when it can really help, I think it's definitely should be considered. If our goal is to help the community in the best way we can, let's see, the representative from Boys and Girls Club is telling us this is the best way they can help the most youth.
Absolutely.
I just have a question.
I just have a question because I sat on that committee as well with Councilman Silva. So will the funding still, I mean, there's still programming still?
Absolutely, 100%. Yes. We can't run without programming.
Right, so I guess my thing is when I went into this committee, that our thoughts were that a lot of the money was being generated on this side and we still wanted to help the west side as well so they didn't feel left out. And I think that's why we were trying to focus on putting some money over there too. And I think that was the main concern so that way it's kind of spread it out evenly.
I see what you're saying.
When we were directed by Guide House as well. So I think that's kind of a little bit clarification for you two, why we chose that one versus the capital, so.
I see, okay.
Yes. So, and this would not be directed to you, but thank you for your information. This would be directed, I guess, maybe to.
And procedurally, if questions are done for her, then we need to go back into the regular order of business and let her sit.
So let me, let me get to other questions.
Okay.
Yes, I do.
Yes.
For clarification regarding, because we recently just approved the termination of a lease agreement with the Big Brothers Big Sisters. Will, if this is approved?
That's different than us.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
So we terminated the lease, the property that you currently have by the YMCA. Where is that? I don't, because I keep thinking.
It's right next to the parking lot. It used to be Junior Achievement, so.
Yes, and I think that one was across. Well, I saw that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. You don't need any programming dollars?
We, we can use, yes, we can use programming dollars, I will tell you. I've secured some MDE money, which is a one-time thing for programming, but not saying that we can, this is over three-year period. So I mean, either way, I'm winning. I, you know what I'm saying? I am not complaining by any means, I am very, very thankful. So I'm just throwing it out there as, I was just asking the question. I didn't mean to cause a whole bunch of.
And I read that tone in your email and it's hard to have tones be, and you were very like, if it's okay, it's okay, don't worry about it. So thank, yeah, thank you for that courtesy. This decision just come out of the meeting that you had with the guy?
No, this was before.
Okay, all right.
And they were actually very nice about it because we brought it up in that meeting. And so it was a very, a good conversation, but no, this was before.
My question is.
I don't have.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You need a motion?
I need a motion to go back into regular session.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. We're back in regular session. So now, yes.
Thank you. Your discussion, Mayor, so that's what.
Thank you so very much. So my question would be, City Manager, have we allowed or are we allowing any other recipients to change their, what they put in when they put in a proposal? Are we allowing them to change? Because I remember this, the more I sit here, I remember because I was opposed to that. Because it was after the proposal was made that that change was able to be made later. So I am familiar with that. But are we allowing any other entities to do the same?
If there's an entity that has an idea, then we'll bring it back to council the same way. So it's not, from a staff's point of view, like I think the mayor said or the clerk said, we're not necessarily advocating for one way or another. But if, if an organization requests this, we'll do the work to put together a resolution and bring it back for your consideration. But I think, you know, especially as they go through these meetings, there might be more discussion where other organizations do say, hey, you know, this might work better for our group to be able to provide services or, hey, you know, since the allocation, our roof has a giant hole in it, so could we use it for, we'll bring that back to you, whatever, you know, if the organization requests it, yes.
My thing, my issue is, and you know, it is what it is, that they were allowed to change that way before today, months ago. And it was not brought to council. I remember that. I just seen it. The proposal was changed.
I think they submitted, in, we've had 400 plus, I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be able to say all of them, but I think that we asked them for a capital proposal. Is that accurate? I know Lori's been working with them, but I think we asked them for that.
Yes, we did. I think we had a meeting with, I think, the mayor, maybe Councilman Williams and Mayor Protem. And I was asked to actually reach out to them to see if they had a capital plan that they could use the funds for. And another thing that I'll note is that some of the agencies that received allocations, they haven't submitted a plan. There's no plan in the proposal. There's just a budget. So I think this is going to be kind of moving going forward.
Mayor?
Yes.
The two questions I have, and you could possibly answer this. The first one is, when it comes down to, you shared that they were contacted about if they had a capital. Were all of the submissions contacted about if they only had, if they only had programming? Were all of the program contacted about submitting a capital?
No.
Okay.
I think that came out of the first meeting that was with youth, which was just Reggie. I don't think Councilman Sylvia or Garcia, Councilwoman Garcia had joined that group yet.
I had been in the group from day one, so.
I think it was the first group with the mayor, though.
I was in, I was part of that group from day one.
Let me say this. The discussion was had and it was had, not trying to hide or slide anybody.
I should have been part of that if it was part of the group that I was supposed to be in. That's all over here because it's already done. I've been, I've been assigned to that group from day one. So that was a meeting I was not privy to.
I think I was under the understanding that that was the first meeting the mayor had with Reggie or Councilwoman, or Councilman Williams was kind of kicking off that group.
Well, it really wasn't a meeting. We just talked about it.
Right.
It really wasn't a meeting. We just talked and he said, okay, he would get with the team. And, and so then the question came, well, do we need to ask if they need capital, capital, capital improvement done? I mean, that's, that's just the given. I mean, we, we don't want to take money back and we don't, if we don't have to. And at the end of the day, if they're requesting to have capital done, I mean, either we go do it or we not, and that's just that simple.
Right, I think some of the plans did not, I think there was another group that did not submit a capital request, but they were awarded.
Yeah, there were a lot of people.
And they only submitted for programming.
And Attorney, if you can guide me on this one. And this question is for the committee. So were their proposals that were denied or were not evaluated properly because we didn't have a metric system and all that, that we did not look solely because they were programming or capital? And they were some of the organizations that were not contacted about the opportunity to submit a capital project? So are there any, and this is from the committee. This is what was given to us. We're, we now realize committee and us had different understandings. Were any organizations that only had programming, which sounds like the committee did their own thing? There were some organizations that were contacted about submitting a capital after the fact. And we now are aware that other organizations were not contacted about a capital. Did that impact you all as a committee in bringing that to us as a team?
I never knew that the, any of the entities were contacted and were saying, well, would you like to do a capital? I never knew that, so. It is definitely, I can't answer that because I was not, I didn't have the wherewithal that that was being done.
Thank you, my question.
But, and I think there, as Finance Director Brown pointed out, there is another allocation that was made in youth for capital and the organization did not request capital. And that was one, I don't remember if they were, had someone reach out to them, but that was a recommendation as well that council approved when in their original proposal, they did not, they did not apply for capital. They applied only for programming and they were allocated programming and capital.
Right, and there were. Right, and there were some agencies, like I said, that only attached a budget. We don't really even know what programming was intended to be approved. We have to work that out in our meeting with Guide House, I think.
I guess I'm a little confused, too, because we sat in the meetings, you know, and I was in my work time, got him, so I could sit in on him, and you know, he was telling us about the capital and, you know, how it worked, and then the, what was it, our capital and programming? And so, he kind of was trying to guide us to tell us which way to go, but then it seemed like at the end towards things have changed, so I guess it's a little confusion for us that we're in on that, you know, what's going on now, you know? I guess it's just, I don't know if it's lack of communication from him or what's going on, but I, I think that's where Councilman so is a little frustrated.
And I think we're getting a little off-topic, too, because we have a motion before us to approve a resolution to change one funding allocation, and that's what the focus of the discussion should be on.
And I'm appreciative of Attorney Lust, because that, in making this decision, has been concerning to me, because what I'm realizing and finding out more and more, there are some things that I do not feel comfortable voting yes on this, now knowing that other organizations did not have that opportunity. And I don't know how we do that, because I support, because teams are still being helped.
Right.
That's not the question. I'm just a little leery, because at this point, I'm trying to say, was that equitable? And are the people not being contacted about, and although we did approve and all that other stuff, there is nothing that was concrete that we can go back and say, this is what the rules were, that's what I'm concerned about, and I don't want to vote on this. And we, I have no clear verbiage of, I'm hearing why, but I would like something that I can go back to a document and say, "Nope, this is why, because this was the rule and this is what we invited by."
Well, and I think we're getting lost in the mud a little bit on that particular question, because regardless of whether they submitted a second proposal, or they didn't submit a proposal, at the end of the day, what happened is, the initial meeting occurred with the entity who was awarded, and they have made a request for a changing in how that money can be used. And there might be other entities, regardless of what proposal they did or did not submit, or how they worded their proposals, who might do that in the future. And so, all of those will come back to council for consideration.
I mean, this is, I guess with that in mind, this does set how staff will do this. So, if we, if that is the feeling of council that it's something you don't want to change, if another organization requests it, then maybe we don't, we don't bring these back. If you, if it's to be equitable with all groups, I'm open to bringing them back if that's what the organization wants, and let council make a decision. If you want to set something where, okay, this is what we approved, and this is all you can do, then that's fine.
Yes.
So, this is where I'm at right now, based on asking us to switch this, because I'm already hearing it in the community. Oh, they asked for one thing, they didn't get it, so now you're just going to flip it to them and give them whatever they want after the fact that it's been done? And we had two organizations here tonight that had proposals in, that we could actually reallocate these funds to them. I mean, I, I can hear it already. News is watching. I can hear the news article tomorrow, and I can just hear, this is not, I understand you're bringing it back for us. I totally understand what we're trying to do. Don't get me wrong.
And procedurally...
But it's just, I'm just going to say that, that...
Procedurally, I think it's important that if this resolution is not approved, the prior, the prior resolution still stands.
Right.
That's true.
The money doesn't go back into the pot.
Right.
We need stuff in black and white.
That's it.
That's all.
Yep. I just need black and white.
Same on page.
Because I would support this if I had something in black and white. Please forgive me, Mayor, I'm sorry.
What'd you say?
No, no, please, I spoke back to the council. Please forgive me, extra forgiveness.
Yes.
Okay. We unanimously gave this organization the sum of money weeks ago, okay? We unanimously support this organization. We had another organization here who said they never would have applied for these millions of dollars if they'd known it was done on reimbursement. We're not talking about taking their money from them, you know? And we shouldn't. We put together a process where we were going to reevaluate these things in six months, where we knew people were going to be meeting, these recipients were going to be meeting with these folks. If things have changed since they have put their proposal in, because they're not allowed to service teenagers, and that means that the same amount of money would make more sense for them to use it in this, this fashion, that makes sense. We've sat here for months deliberating this stuff, saying we need to hit the ground running, we need to move, 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 get this money in hands, get shovels in the ground, and we have an organization who's come back and said, "You know what? Let's save a little money on the administration costs. We'll do capital. We can write them a check for whatever those capital things are and be done with it." I just, this makes no sense to me that we would sit here and penalize this organization because they, they sat there and had their meeting with Guide House and figured out that there was a better strategy than what they came up with the first time around. I just, I don't get it. I don't get it. And I hope if we're going to do this to them, we do it to every other organization that comes through here, you know? You know, if we're not going to let them change and make, make sense, then if we can't work with these people through Guide House, then we shouldn't be doing it with anybody else. You know, that's, crying out loud.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got to respond to that now.
Good.
Because if they're not going to use it the way they, they were intended to spend it, what they asked for, then we just need to claw it back and give it to somebody else. I know there's a previous approved motion, but we can make a motion to take that money back, too. We can deny this one, deny the other one, and bring it back. That's the way I feel. When you ask for something, that's what you asked for, because we have a lot of people that are waiting. So, anyways, I'm done.
Yes. Councilwoman Sylvia.
I'm not going to say I'm floored, but when I found out some new information tonight, that people, different entities, or just one entity was asked, that changed my whole everything tonight. I'm not saying not to give them the money for programming, but this here is a different story. I'm not saying take money back, because the young lady, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name. She said they can still use it. So, since they can still use it for programming, and that's what we approved, we, let me tell you something. I ain't going to be sitting in front of nobody with a lawsuit. That's number one on my, for me, for anything I did here as a city council member. And as we get to talking and talking, things, it just don't, if it just don't look right. I'm not saying anything was done, you know, any particular way, get that right. So, when you reporting that on the news, because you took something out of context before that I did not say. But what I'm saying, if it doesn't look right, I don't want to be involved with it. I will not be sued. My name will not be in the paper for anything that was done wrong. When I heard what I just heard, that they were asked, and none of the other entities were asked, we have a problem.
But who were they asked by?
You didn't hear that, that, uh, young lady from, uh, I'm sorry.
Boys and Girls Club?
No. The young lady, I'm sorry, she works for the city in the back.
Lori, Lori.
I'm sorry.
The Finance Director.
She just said that. Yeah, don't, don't, we ain't going to play.
Yes.
For clarification's sake, when Ms. Brown went back to them and asked them for the capital proposal, was that in response to the fact that things changed on the ground, and they were not able to service the programming dollars, the teens? I'm just trying to, nothing?
Can I just clarify one thing that, and David did, from Guide House, did include this in the menu, in his memo? The original, they actually had two proposals that they submitted. Project 53 was for administration, and Project 287 was for capital. And so, I think there was a discussion, well, they do have a capital need, can we just reach out to them and see if they could use it all for capital? So, they did have an original request that included both.
A timely submitted proposal.
Yes.
Right.
And it's in your memo from Guide House.
Just one minute.
Lori, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think this is what it's always coming down to. This had nothing to do with the Boys and...
Boys and Girls Club.
For me, it was all about black and white. I don't want it coming back. From what was just shared, it's now telling me that that was submitted on time, and we didn't go behind closed doors and change anything. But how it came out was afterwards, what I'm still having a hesitation with is that that wasn't clearly shared with everyone about submitting a capital and a program. And this is coming from community, people who just say, "Well, I knew when we started allocating money and talking about capital, there were a couple of conversations that were going on publicly." And now, at this point, why I'm asking for black and white is so we can quiet the noise, and we have actual black and white information. So, even from today, there needs to be some black and white saying that if an organization wants to reallocate anything like that, that we now have a process that it should not, to share with you all, share with councils. Because I trust what you all are doing, but when we get, like today, I got the email today coming from, "I couldn't do my due diligence, and even when I checked my council, I wanted to." And so, thank you for sharing that information, and that it's nothing about putting organizations through the wringer. If anything, it's for us as a city to have black and white information where we don't have people questioning us. We can actually say, "Nope, that's why we're doing what we're doing," because I trust what y'all doing.
Right, and I think that's the point of the first meeting with Guide House, is to really go over what is your plan, because we haven't seen some plans. And so, there may be other agencies who, it was just programming, but maybe they will have a capital need, too. So, I think it's just kind of like being fluid with the process, and your allocation was this, but how can we work best with the agency to spend that money to make a big impact to the community? That's all that I think we were trying to do.
Yes.
This may be my last question in regards to this, or my last statement. I remember that this, they were allowed to change their proposal. Now, if I'm wrong, somebody correct me, because the original proposal was not capital. That was added later. Whether it was added, when exactly, but it was added later, so I know that. They submitted, looked at it.
She just said that they submitted a capital...
They submitted two proposals on time into the portal.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, so, I'm going to call for the vote.
Is that a motion?
I want to call for the vote.
Is there any more discussion?
I'm sorry, is there any more discussion?
I would motion to postpone until the next council meeting. Second now. I think it needs additional clarification. I did get your email at 4:39, but at this point, I was getting ready.
I made a motion to call for the vote, and then you came back with another motion.
I didn't hear you make a motion. I heard you say calling for the vote.
Okay, that's fine.
So, if I misunderstood, I apologize, but you didn't have a second either, Mayor.
That's fine. So, what is the motion that's on the floor?
Postpone until the next meeting.
Do we need a second?
Yes. So, there's discussion now.
Any discussion?
The reason why? Again, um, yeah, thank you. At this time, it deserves additional debate and attention, including the reasons that the manager had stated in the city attorney, that there's, this is larger than just one entity at this point.
I didn't hear nothing said.
Really?
I didn't hear nothing that you said.
Okay. I made sense, though.
Well, can you repeat it?
So, at this point, it seemed rushed. It deserves additional debate. I got your email at 4:39 today, but I myself was getting ready for the meeting. I looked through it. Yet, if there are additional ramifications that are not just going to go for one recipient, and we're setting precedent, then this is something that we'll have to need additional time on. Now, you guys know my secret, why I put this so close to my face.
Any other discussion?
I just want to say that I'm a little bit frustrated tonight by all this, and all I ask going forward is if we can have something in black and white, that we're all on the same page, that everybody knows, the community we know, and they can go back and say, "Okay," just like Koki said, you know? Then that way, there's not all this bickering going on. It's in black and white, you can see, "Okay, this is why I didn't qualify. Oh, this capitalist, this is programming," and that's all, maybe more clarification. And then I think we'll be good going forward. We won't have all these sides, conversations and that going on and stuff about, possibly.
Any more discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. Additionally, I had asked that David come to the next meeting, so that would be helpful for this as well.
Discussion. This motion is...
I just want to say that, as many of you all know, my passion is youth, so I don't want you to think, I don't want anyone to think...
Motion is to postpone, so your discussion has to be on postponing.
Okay, I'll save it for Ms. Lynn.
Okay, so, we're calling for the vote. The motion is on postponing.
Yes.
The recommendations.
Resolution until the next meeting.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. So, we are postponing.
Is approved and postponed.
Do we have any other motions that we want to make? Yes.
I motion to allocate, that the Saginaw City Council hereby allocates, not to exceed in the amount, to the women of color, in the amount of $200,000 for eligible expenses.
Second.
It's been moved to second, any discussion? I have a question. How much money do we have? What I don't want to do is, I don't want to be saying we giving out some money and we don't have it.
I think that there is about $1,089,000 in unallocated funds.
So, if you're going to give it, then you need to give what we have, then trying to go over. I understand it's 189, whatever it is, but if you just, if you say 2 million or 200,000, however, you got to have the money back. That's like me writing a check, and I'm a couple pennies. You know, I'm shy of what I'm, what I'm supposed to get. So, I'm asking the question. You said we got one, what, 100?
1,089,000. So, you have over...
One zero.
And what did you ask, Brown?
200,000, Mayor.
Okay. Is the motion on for a yes?
Is, a question for the councilman, is the money for programming or for capital?
Programming.
Okay. And another question is that with all of our resolutions, there has been the provisions that we have here in front of us, if they're not met, I think that we should also take that into consideration.
Yes, I agree.
So, I would make a motion to amend, the motion to include all of the other stipulations in the other resolutions that we have approved to date for all of our other entities that we've allocated funds to.
A second.
It's been moved to second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Is this coming from the youth bucket?
Yes. Well, I, I don't know. I don't know.
All right, all right.
Does I have a question? When we get to discussion?
Yes, we are in discussion.
Discussion on the motion to amend.
Mend, yes.
Right, so, I don't have discussion on the motion... Right, so I, I don't have discussion on the motion to amend. I'm fine with the amendment.
Okay. Need a motion for discussion?
No, you, you need to vote on the motion to amend, and then you're back on your main motion.
Yep.
Okay, we're making a vote. All those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Now, you have the main motion.
The main motion.
As amended.
As amended. Open for discussion.
Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, okay. So, a while back, we made a motion to allocate $10 million to youth and recreation, and from that same bucket, we pulled workforce development. Uh, we've since made allocations to workforce development and youth exceeding that amount. We also have motions on the table from prior with staff, and Mayor Protem and I, as the two on the public health bucket, were provided two of the proposals that were potentially to be considered because I believe it was Councilman Copland, Copeland, or myself, or, and, and Mayor Moore even, um, made a motion to direct staff to bring that back to us. So the next round of allocations that we'd be reconsidering, which was the direction of council, was public health. And so, I'm just trying to get some clarity. How much over the $10 million have we allocated to this bucket, number one? And number two, um, what is the status of the public health stuff that the consensus of council directed staff to bring back to us? Because if we're going to be making motions to eat up this last million dollars, and we're just throwing, you know, throwing it out, that we might have to pay Guide House any further, and we're just going to take that from our general fund. I've got a couple of projects I want to put forward too, shoot.
Well, I'll, um, you know, let Yolanda answer the dollars question, because she has the spreadsheets. But we, so, back when we go back to public health, I believe the public health subcommittee is the mayor and Mayor Protem. I don't know if there's a third one on there. But the motion that was made by council at that time was directing staff to return with proposed recommendations. So, I asked Guide House to go through those, and one of the directions from the committee, subcommittee was, what's for profit, what's nonprofit? So, I recommended two, funding for two nonprofit projects for public health back to the subcommittee, and that, I, I think that was the direction of council. So those two projects are still sitting out there. One, they're both, um, I'm sorry, I don't recall what they are. One is through, one is a community garden, I know, and, um, I can't remember what the second one was.
Well, yeah, St. Mary's Ascension, I think they need washers for one, and the other one was, um, Youth Protection Network, they need vans, capital purchases.
Then if that's the case, you got Black Arts Festival.
Right.
It's five years old.
I guess that's my point. We've heard from so many people that didn't get money, and we really don't have any money left. And I think we've said over and over again, we've just run up the cost of Guide House by allocating dollars to programming. So I hesitate to allocate any further, especially since the youth and recreation bucket allocated 10 million plus.
Okay, just to let you know, I'm looking at both youth development and the workforce development. Collectively, you've allocated 10,650,000.
What about just youth and development?
Youth development is two, uh, 2.25 million that you've allocated. And then, when you added Holton Jones last, um, time, that brought your eight million up to 8.4 million under youth development. So collectively, you spent, or have allocated 10.65.
For just youth and development, this would equal to what? And that would be the recommendation, because those were separate recommendations?
I, I think there's, there's, to me, there's some confusion in the youth, because the committee, the committee did put workforce development in youth.
With youth development, yes.
What committee did that?
Well, it's in the ARPA recommendation, and then when council made the recommendation, it was $10 million for youth, so...
Right.
It's still up to council what you want to allocate it to.
Correct. So if you want to look at it from youth development standpoint only, it's 8.4 million dollars. If you're looking at it from workforce development, it's 2.25 million.
Yes.
Okay. Youth development was allocated 10 billion dollars. Our committee for that was not privy to, and I think I made this statement before, that the workforce dollars were coming from that. I didn't know until after I left out of council that that's how that wa, how that was.
Mayor, we need to stay on topic of the motion.
Well, everybody else was off top, topic, so now I need to stay on topic. Okay, y'all, stay on topic.
That's going to create a whole different debate, I'm afraid. So we got to stay on the topic of what the motion...
Well, we just heard the, uh, Mayor Protem say, well, you know, her whole list, well, she has a list, this, that, and the third, and that was definitely not that. But I'm cool. I'm, I'm good with that.
What?
I'm good, I'm good, but go do whatever we can do.
What's the motion we got on the table?
I thought we was going to vote on the motion.
Motion is to allocate ARPA funding to the women of colors in the amount not to exceed $200,000 for programming, including all stipulations as outlined in previous resolutions.
Call for the vote. Yes, George.
Now, is that a motion, or what?
No. You know, at this point, I don't know what it is, but George...
If I can get, I can get clarification. I know, we have money set aside for mental health and wellness. I mean, uh, mental health, is that correct?
No.
Or we don't?
No.
He just has the hair real funny.
Okay.
So, you, you have $1,089,000 left. So, do with it, allocate it how you will.
That's right.
If it's... If you want to allocate it to, if you want to allocate to mental health after you do this, that's, that's fine, but you, it, I'll tell you what, I would vote on this and get it done.
I'm sorry, what is that?
Go ahead.
Vote on this and...
Oh, okay.
So we have a motion on the floor, and it's been moved to second. What, the motion was to amend or to allocate the money with all of the necessary same conditions as the previous resolution, the women of color. All those in favor? I mean, I'm sorry, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Motion's approved.
We have, the motion has passed. Do we have any other? Yes, ma'am.
You saying any other motion, sir? Yeah, I'd like to, uh, motion to give, uh, I have two, do I need to do them separate? Because I have two.
Separate.
Okay. The one would be to give the police department $100,000 for including youth programming.
Second.
Ken. Okay, second. It's been moved to second. Now, can, I, it's open for discussion. Can we do that? I thought before we could not give any dollars to public, to public safety.
Well, i- if it's in youth, then I, you could probably fit it within specific guidelines, but I don't know that we need that, or we have the staffing to be able to do that. Chief has some other grants right now. If you want to look at, you know, we, we had this discussion about you wanted something in black and white, and now we're just pulling things out to allocate, so...
No, that's not what I'm doing. I researched that.
I, that's...
We don't have anything black and white.
But I mean, we haven't...
You don't either.
If you, if council...
We ain't going there, don't stop. We ain't doing that today.
Counsel, counsel.
If councils would like, if you would like to send things so we can craft the same resolutions that we've done for everyone else for consideration, that's probably the best way to handle it, so you can all see what's going to be allocated.
Then I can do that.
We can have them on the agenda, so, like you were saying, we want everybody to know what's being done. I think you probably all have some things, you've got, now you've got 800 and...
Eighteen.
89,000 dollars left. So, um, if you want to send, well, you, you have the motion, you have to vote on it now. But if you want to send ideas to me, we'll get the same resolutions that we had for everybody else.
And I'll do that, thank you very much. Don't, don't, okay, thank you. Don't do that.
Mayor Moore.
We have, yes.
Her or manager, it would be okay if we did not support this particular motion?
I think we can...
You could be, or you could postpone.
I, I can take the motion back. I, I, I take back and ask the session.
It's been seconded, but if you vote on this, um, it's definitely something we can bring back at the next meeting. So then you can, you, you probably all have ideas. If you send them to me, I'll put them on the agenda, and you can do those for consideration.
That's, that's fine.
Yes.
Motion to postpone, um, until the next meeting.
Second.
Second.
Do we need a motion? I thought she was sending him a...
That is a motion. No, she couldn't because it was a second, it was already before the whole council.
Oh, okay.
So now we have a motion to postpone.
There's a motion on the floor, did we get a second?
We have it.
Any discussion?
Question, can I, a question, um, for the clerk?
All those in favor signify by...
A question for the clerk. So, these items, the postponed items will go into old business on the agenda? Is that how?
Unfinished.
Unfinished business, okay. Just want to make sure council's aware. They'll go in to that item, um, both the Big Brothers and Big Sisters and this one. And this one will craft the resolution, the same as the other ones.
All right, thank you very much.
The motion on the floor, yes. There's a motion on the floor, it's been moved to second, to postpone. Did I say it right?
Yes.
Postpone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Do we have anything else? If not...
I have one thing. If, if, since we're, we're doing this, can, can, could staff please provide like resolution language for the St. Mary's Garden and the Youth Protection Council? Or Youth Protection Network?
Send it in to him.
Send it in, well, he, well, it's the ones you sent us. Could we get resolution language for that?
Yes.
Please, and thank you.
Anything else?[1780.15]